Good evening.
Evening.
On a fine San Bruno evening. Here we are, inside.
Um, uh, city clerk and staff, are we ready?
Yes, we are.
Thank you so much. All right, good evening, and I'd like to call the San Bruno City Council Meeting of May the 11th, 2021 to order. May we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Hamilton? Steven, Councilmember Hamilton? I'm not sure he can hear us. Uh, well, Councilmember Hamilton is here, um, I'm not sure he's hearing us right now. Uh, Councilmember Mason?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Sorry, my speaker was off.
Oh, there you go, okay. Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here. Clerk, uh, can you make me a co-host, please?
Yes.
I'm not seeing...
Ms. Johnson is being brought into the room.
Thank you. Thank you, you're on top of it, appreciate it. Um, this evening for the pledge, I've asked, uh, Ms. Jean Johnson to lead us in the pledge, uh, this evening, and wait for her to, um, there she is, and, um, if we could put our mic, uh... Jean, if you could turn your mic on? There you go. Whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank, uh, Jean Johnson for leading us in the pledge, and the reason for that is a, a, a few things. First, Jean is a past president and on the Friends of the Library, like, past 10 years. Um, she also is somebody who has volunteered to the library in many capacities, from book sales, organizing the little lobby sale, um, and its folks like Jean, uh, in these more difficult times when we don't have, didn't have pages, that has stepped up and helped us out, in addition to Marcia Glassner, who was a page, and then when we had to shut things down, she still said, hey, I want to volunteer, and now she's coming back helping us as a page again, and also Mary Ann Dornless, who retired in 2005 from the library, but, uh, through COVID has come back to help, uh, the library and the services. And Tim will tell me, Jean, that, uh, all of you folks and what you do has been critical and essential, uh, to keeping things going and helping provide the service to the community. So, uh, I wanted to thank you very much, and I appreciate you being here and leading us this evening.
You're welcome.
You have a good evening, and you're not required to stay through the meeting.
Thank you.
Good night. Now we'll move on to, um, public comments for items not on the agenda, and so at this time, uh, if it's, uh, not on the agenda, if you could please raise your virtual hand, and this is for individuals who will be allowed up to three minutes, it is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agenda's pursuant to state law. And I will turn it over to our city clerk.
Paul Wapinski?
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready, Paul.
Yeah, I've got a comment, would it be possible to link the agenda packet items to tabs so that we don't have to search through the entire PDF document to find the staff report? I find it really annoying to have to scroll through, you know, numerous pages to try to find the, the item that goes with the, uh, the agenda item, and if you just make it easier, you could just click on it, and we'll go right to it, and we could read that instead of having to, to search through a big, huge PDF document. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, I appreciate it. Next, please.
Next is Stephen Seymour or Sandra Perez Vargas? Hi, Stephen.
Hello, Melissa, it is me.
Whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you. Um, I, I just wanted to, uh, invite San Bruno down, I, I know that Linda's going to be speaking later about this, but she's going to be covering topics, I'm not, um, I believe. Um, uh, I, I'd like to invite, uh, San Bruno down to the Peninsula Art Museum. Uh, today I, uh, started helping them staff it, and it's a wonderful addition to the mall and also to the city. Uh, it's great that they, the Peninsula Art Museum decided to, uh, put their footing here in San Bruno. Um, and there's a couple of artists, one in particular that I really like, Jamie Brezny, uh, Breznisky. He's local to Pacifica, um, wonderful large paintings, uh, aerial, uh, landscapes, um, he really has a, a craft worth seeing. Um, the museum is just that, it's a museum, it's, while, uh, some of the pieces can, uh, uh, be purchased, it's really about just offering, uh, San Bruno and, and the greater peninsula the ability to see works of art by, uh, local artists. Um, I'll be volunteering and staffing it on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and, um, I'd really like to invite, uh, San Bruno down. Today we had quite a few guests walk in, um, and if you're an artist in San Bruno or anywhere, uh, and you're listening right now, um, there's a form that can be filled out onsite or, or on the Peninsula Art Museum, uh, website, uh, so that, uh, you may be considered for future showings. Um, but it's a wonderful addition to San Bruno, and I'd just like to invite, uh, everybody in the listening public down to the Tanfram Mall to see the Peninsula Art Museum. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I'm not seeing any other hands up at this time, um, we'll ask one more time, and then we will go ahead and move on to item number four on our agenda, announcements and presentations. First item is to receive an update on COVID-19 response efforts, and I'll turn it over, Jennifer Dianos, please.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council, members of the public, we're just pulling up the presentation right now. Uh, my name is Jennifer Dianos, I am the Assistant to the City Manager, and I'm here this evening representing the Emergency Operations Center Public Information Team. We will go over the blueprint for a safer economy, our local statistics, and modifications to city services, a reminder to stay connected, and as always, I'll be available for questions at the end of the presentation. So today was a big day for a change in our status for the blueprint for a safer economy. We did move to the yellow tier, um, that was announced by the state earlier today, and it goes into effect tomorrow, Wednesday, uh, May 12th at 12:01 a.m. And what does that mean to businesses? Well, it actually means a lot, there are a lot of changes to allowances for indoor operations as well as outdoor. So they're all on the screen, I'm just going to go through them quickly so that we can, um, get the information out to those that are not looking at the screen. Family entertainment centers can have a 50% capacity, amusement parks at 25% indoors and 35% outdoors, movie theaters at 50% capacity, food courts at the mall can be at 50% capacity, restaurants 50% capacity, all of the, these capacities are indoors, um, and bars at 25% capacity. This is probably the biggest impact, um, for bars, which have had to stay closed unless they served, uh, food. Wine and breweries and distilleries can be open at 50% capacity, places of worship increased to 50% capacity, gyms and fitness centers at 50%, um, sleepaway camps that open on June 1st with modifications, um, and that's most, um, mostly related to summer camps that are available. Um, allowable, uh, allowances outdoors, live events at 67% capacities with modifications. It is limited to in-state visitors only, um, and those are, um, all of the updates that take effect tomorrow at 12:01 a.m., and based on our criteria that was met, um, for our county metrics. In addition to that increase to, um, or rollback, I should say, of restrictions, the county also rescinded our local mask order, and by rescinding the local mask order, basically what that means is that we were aligned to the state order that took effect a, a few weeks ago. This really distinguishes between those who are vaccinated and those who are not. There's really no change to indoor, um, mask wearing, when you're at a public location, mask requirements will remain in place. Outdoors, where you'll see the biggest impact or, or biggest change, those that are fully vaccinated are no longer required to wear face covering, um, except when they're attending crowded events. Those that are unvaccinated are still required to wear face covering outdoors only when they cannot maintain the six-foot physical distancing. A reminder of just regular social etiquette, um, this is just common courtesy, others may not be vaccinated or may feel more comfortable wearing face coverings, and that's okay. It still remains a good way to protect ourselves, our community, and our families. And the full order for this mask, um, information is available on the California Department of Health website, which is linked, it's a hyperlink on the screen, it's spelled out in the much longer address up at the top, um, of the header on this slide. Local statistics, um, here I have information, and I included additional information to compare the city of San Bruno to other agencies countywide. Um, total cases in San Bruno as of this past Friday, May 6th, is 2,360, that's 69 new cases in the last 30 days. A slight uptick since our last 30-day report, which was reported to you, um, at the last council meeting at 50, so it's important to remain aware and to remain cautious. Countywide, there's a total of 41,844 total cases, and that's as of yesterday, May 10th. 420 cases within the last 30 days and 568 deaths. And the color coding on the map on the screen, you could see the different shades of blue, and that shows in our vicinity, we're, um, comparable to local agencies. Within the county, it is spread out a little bit, depending on agency to agency, but it all, it is all relative within the county. On this slide, we have statistics for vaccinations, for San Bruno in particular, our vaccination rate of, um, residents that are 16 age and older is at 75.7%. We have a range for our health equity quartile, we have about four census tracts within our city, and so that range is from 64% to 73.5% based on the different census tracts that are within our, our jurisdiction. Countywide, the total for 16 and older is 76.4, so up above, we're just below the county, we're at 75.7. And then for the health equity quartile, the average is 64%, so we're, we're equal and just above, um, depending on the census track, uh, countywide. That's also shown, uh, by imagery of dot size on the map, um, in front of you. Vaccine, um, clinic schedules, this still remains a critical part to our recovery, vaccine clinics are available countywide, all Californians aged 16 and above are eligible for a vaccine. Um, there has been discussion of that going down to the, the, uh, 12-year, 12-to-15-year range. That information has not yet been added within our county, but it may be forthcoming. Local appointments are available at this time to 16 and over, and most are available without appointments, and so there are opportunities. The county put together a calendar that shows all of the local vaccine clinics that are located throughout the county, as well as mass vaccination sites, they're all available on a county calendar. It's linked on the screen, it's also linked on our website. And I'm going to read it out loud just for the benefit of those that are not looking at the screen, and that's www.snchealth.org/vaccineclinical calendar. Changes to city services, so we have some operational modifications, picnic reservations will open, uh, beginning tomorrow. Picnic areas are available at Commodore Brandy and San Bruno City Park. Some sites at City Park will remain closed due to construction of the new recreation and aquatic center, and reservations must be made, excuse me, must be made at least seven days in advance. On the screen, there is a link to make those reservations at sanbruno.ca.gov/picnics. There are some rules and requirements that are, um, included on the website, if you have to show proof of identification, you have to, um, submit payment, there are restrictions in terms of capacity that is sometimes tied to the size of the picnic site, and of course, there's the, the max capacity depending on what tier we are on for the blueprint for a safer economy. And the library, as you know, did open for browse and go, um, we have current hours that are daily, Monday through Friday, and we're happy to announce that we will be expanding that to now offer Saturday hours. This will be new beginning June 5th, um, so we still have about a month away, um, before this takes effect, but starting June 5th, Saturday hours will be available from 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. for browse and go, curbside pickup from 1 to 2, and 3 to 5 browse and go as well. This does not change the availability for the browse and go and the curbside pickup Monday through Friday, so those will remain the same. There's also the recreation center programming, the virtual programming, and the summer in-person camps that are still available, although they're not on the screen, as well as senior center virtual programming in our lunch program that still remains available. A reminder to stay connected and follow us on social media, today the fastest way to get information out about our, um, change to the yellow tier was to post it on social media, and so if you're not already following us, please do so, please sign up for our emergency alerts at SMCLER. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Jennifer, for, uh, your presentation, and, uh, let's turn to Vice Mayor, uh, Medina, please.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, Jennifer, for that report, it's, um, it's great that we're, we're really approaching, hopefully, the end of this, um, being in the yellow tier, and everyone still needs to be careful. Um, the question I have for you tonight is, what portions of City Park will remain closed?
Sure, so I can get that information, they are specific picnic sites, and they are related to the proximity of the actual construction, I'm sorry, I don't have the number, the picnic number site, the site numbers, um, but I can get that information out.
Great, and this is for the, the, uh, Recreation Aquatic Center or for the project to do the paving along the baseball field side?
So that's going to depend on construction activity, so at this time I'm going to say bold, but it's really going to vary, it's going to depend.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other, uh, questions? Okay, um, Jennifer, again, thank you, and if, if you could, um, stop sharing the screen, and we'll bring it back to council, thank you very much again.
Thank you.
All right, well, we'll proceed on to the next item, uh, Provide Summary of the San Bruno Spring Cleanup Event. Let me see that, uh, our Recology GM is here, Kirsten Noki, and welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, thank you for allowing me to take a minute to review the results from our second community cleanup event. I want to first thank the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints for allowing us to utilize their parking lot for this event. This great space allowed for increased safety and allowed us to let more residents onto the property, and we therefore avoided a backup on Sneath Lane. The event welcomed in 264 San Bruno residents from 8 a.m. to 11 a.m. It was, to say the least, a huge success. We diverted 6,700 pounds of electronic waste and 8,000 pounds of paint out of the landfill. We also prevented mattresses, refrigerators, and exercise machines from potentially becoming abandoned waste. Residents absolutely utilized the opportunity to clean out their garage, side yards, attics, and contributed... and contributed to the 31,000 pounds of garbage collected. Nearly 23 tons of material were totally collected. We could not have called the event a success without the help of the volunteers. We had 18 volunteers contribute their valuable time, including, but not limited to, our entire city council, mayor, city manager, and police chief. Recology employees also jumped at the chance to give back and help out. Thank you again to the city of San Bruno for their partnership with this event. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann, and we do appreciate it. Uh, just as a point of reference, in October, when it was first held, it was 161 vehicles, so 264, um, and, uh, everyone was, appreciate everybody, uh, help and, and lending a hand, and also to the folks at the church for allowing us that opportunity, I think, uh, logistically, it just made a lot more, uh, sense, and it, and it was a very smooth, um, day, and to show you that they have still wishing to be, uh, a good partner, uh, they've reached out to the county already and said, hey, if, if you need a vaccination place, we're here. So, uh, they continue to, uh, always want to help, and, uh, it was, and, and I, I really want to thank everybody. Uh, any questions or comments from my colleagues?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I think the obvious question, um, is, when's the next one?
Tomorrow, no, just kidding.
Thank you.
Let me, let's, let's, uh, throw that to Recology for right now, though I know, I know there's not a date set, but what is, uh...
Thank you for asking that, I think, uh, we're definitely, um, want to have another one, I think the last one was, what, in November? So I, let's look to, uh, to have a discussion with staff in, the next one in another six months, probably, or so. I think right now, twice a year is working, two very good successes, and we can only build from it, so definitely something we want to talk about.
Yeah, no, thank you for the question, and I think, uh, it was October 17th off the top, I was thinking, um, last year, and of course, the, the date was picked because it was, normally we've done Operation Clean Sweep, so this was something in lieu of that, so that was helpful. Um, anything else from my colleagues?
Just a quick comment...
Yes.
For the mayor, um, the, such a, such a, um, successful event, it was, uh, an honor to be able to participate in it. Um, and, uh, this was also the first opportunity I've had to be in the same physical location as all four of my colleagues on council, and I'm glad it was able to happen at a, at such a, a important community-focused event, so thanks, everyone, it was really, it was really well done.
Thank you, and yes, and, and not only did, uh, it was the first time that we've all been together, uh, and, uh, also they put us to work, so, um, if, if nothing else, I want to thank again, um, everybody, and appreciate your, uh, updating presentation, and enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move on to the next item, item C, Announce Proclamation for Peace Officers Day. Read a, a little bit, and then I'm going to ask the chief to, to come in as well. So during, uh, May 9th to the 15th is, uh, of this year is National Police Week in San Bruno. Uh, normally we used to have that at, at the mall, as you know, but obviously with COVID, that is not possible. But for some historical perspective, it's whereas in 1962, recognizing critical role that peace officers serve in keeping our communities safe, and the ultimate price paid, that calling by so many, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th to be National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas there are approximately 900,000 peace officers working in communities across the United States, including, uh, including the dedicated members of the San Bruno Police Department, and whereas, um, and this, people may not know this, but whereas former police chief Arthur Meehan and a former San Bruno police officer, Albert Courtney, uh, were both killed in line of duty while serving our community in 1923 and in 1924 respectfully. And whereas the peace officers of the San Bruno Police Department serve a critical role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the people of our community every day, whereas it is important for those of our community to better understand the duties, responsibilities, and challenges of their local police department, and whereas it is important for members of our police department to continuously recognize their duty to serve people courageously, safeguarding their lives and property. Whereas the city of San Bruno wishes to honor and remember the peace officers who have lost their lives in the most noble calling, both in San Bruno and beyond. Whereas the city of San Bruno wishes to convey its appreciation for the dedicated service of the members of the San Bruno Police Department and peace officers everywhere, and now therefore have it be resolved, I Rico I Medina, Mayor of the city of San Bruno, to by hereby complain, uh, declare May 15th, 2021 to be National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week of May 9th through the 15th to be National Police Week in honor of the peace officers who through their courage, deeds, have paid the ultimate price in service to their communities, as well as to the families and loved ones of the fallen, and to the brave peace officers who continue to answer the calling to protect us 24 hours a day, three, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. So with that, I'll, like, turn it over to, uh, our police chief, and I appreciate, uh, you being here this evening, and I think you know, I believe that the council, uh, very much appreciates all that are, are the men and women of this department and throughout that do, who are preserving our community and safeguard, chief?
First of all, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and to all of you members of council for taking a few moments and for sharing these kind words, please know that they mean a great deal to the men and women, to all those who wear the uniform and, and go about trying to do the best work they can daily to keep us all safe. Uh, it is definitely with a heavy heart that I accept those words from you this evening. Uh, the last 24 hours have been very difficult for law enforcement family in the Bay Area. Uh, we lost Detective Luca Benedetti of the San Luis Obispo Police Department, who comes from a San Bruno family, uh, yesterday while serving a search warrant in San Luis Obispo. He's a 13-year veteran and a detective of that department, but more importantly, a loving husband, a father of two, and again, a San Bruno family, and my heart really goes out to the sacrifice that that family has paid in that loss today. This particular one hits home for me as a, a very important person in my life, early on, a field training officer and a partner of mine in San Diego lost his life a few years ago the exact same way, uh, serving a search warrant, being shot immediately upon entering the residence. It's a, it's a reminder that it is a very dangerous job, and, uh, that we need to respect the, the sacrifice that's made. Additionally, this morning, uh, the Stockton Police Department, a little closer to home, lost Officer Jimmy In, a, a six-year veteran of the department, and yet again, uh, even more important, a loving husband, uh, his wife is also a member of the Stockton Police Department, uh, and leaves behind a seven-month-old and two stepchildren as well. Um, so thi- this week really was originally about honoring those, um, you know, who have paid that ultimate sacrifice, but I think that the reason the whole week was declared was in the spirit that we all look at our own families and loved ones and saying that, uh, we, we shouldn't only give thanks to these individuals when they're gone, uh, we need to show some appreciation for the work they're doing while they're still here, and I think that your words and taking the time to make this proclamation have gone a long way to doing that. The last year has certainly brought forward a lot of calls for reform and difficult conversations between police and the communities they serve, but I firmly believe that the only path forward is for us to find this mutual ground of respect, uh, where, where we respect the communities we serve and your wishes, and, and where at the same time, communities realize that the actions of a few bad actors does not spoil the whole bunch of apples. Uh, the vast majority of police officers come to work every day to do an exceedingly difficult job that becomes more difficult every day, and they do so under scrutiny that would cause most people to cave in their day jobs, and yet they do it, and they do it proudly. And, uh, so I really appreciate your words, and I appreciate honoring those who have paid that ultimate sacrifice, as well as those who take the risk of paying that sacrifice every day and showing up to work, including right here in our own community of San Bruno, thank you very much.
Thank you, chief, for those, uh, uh, very important remarks, and, you know, uh, please know that, that the council, again, is appreciative, and, um, I, I keep all of you in my thoughts and prayers, uh, as I know you... as I know you have this difficult job that you, that you do, and again, our much thanks on behalf of San Bruno, so thank you, sir. And with that, we're going to move on to item D, and that's proclaiming for Wildfire Awareness Month. We'll be bringing in our fire chief. Claring May twenty twenty-one is Wildfire Awareness Month in San Bruno, whereas the City of San Bruno is committed to ensuring the safety and security for those living and/or visiting our city, and whereas wildfire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas May is Wildfire Awareness Month, and is dedicated to wildfire prevention and preparedness. And I'll read it, because I want to hear more from our fire chief, but whereas residents of California, fire-prone communities need to accept responsibility for living in these high-hazard areas, and whereas residents should practice home fire escape plans in every household, including with visitors, and whereas residents should get out and stay out, never going back inside the home for people, pets, or things, and whereas residents must prepare to survive wildfire by ensuring proper management of vegetation surrounding the home and the appropriate home construction and maintenance to resist ignition. Whereas, studies show that the measures taken at the home and in the area within a hundred feet of it, known as the home ignition zone, have a significant impact on minimizing damage and loss, something as simple as cleaning the immediate five-foot zone around the home can assist in making a huge difference in avoiding a catastrophic situation. Now therefore, I Rico E. Medina, Mayor of the City of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim the month of May twenty twenty-one as Wildfire Awareness Month, and I'd like to turn it over to our fire chief at this time.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Thank you very much for having me speak this evening briefly in regards to Wildfire Awareness Month. Just wanted to thank Chief Johansson really quickly, on behalf of all the firefighters, men and women of the San Bruno Fire Department, and our relationship, and their, their working with us every day and what they do. In regards to Wildfire Awareness Month, I just wanted to speak briefly about the proclamation and some of the initiatives we're working on to address the wildfire threat here in the City of San Bruno. First and foremost, I'd like to just briefly comment, we are continuing to work with the California Conservation Corps on defensible space behind the homes at the rim of the canyon, in Crestmore Canyon itself. We had the fortune of engaging, working with Caltrans, who owns a parcel of property that lies along Highway two eighty between Sneeath Avenue and San Bruno Avenues, and backs up against the homes where we're doing work adjacent to it in Crestmore Canyon as well. So, Caltrans has begun a significant amount of work there to reduce the wildfire threat along Highway two eighty and the rear of those residents there. We've also, will be, again, this year, hosting a community chipping program that will start on July twelfth, so please watch the city's website and the fire department's website and social media channels for updates on the locations for those chipping programs going on on July twelfth. And then, I'm happy to announce, just today, we were able to pick up a new fire engine, a special fire engine from Cal OES. This is what they call a Type Six engine, and it's a wildland engine, you see here in the picture before you, and it's a specialized piece of equipment that's really meant for the tight, narrow roads and off-road areas that we have, some of them in San Bruno and some in our region, like Crestmore Canyon, Sweeney Ridge, and other wildland areas in San Bruno, throughout San Mateo County, and throughout, obviously, the state of California. This new piece of equipment comes to the San Brunn, comes to San Bruno from Cal OES at no cost to the city, and is valued at over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the vehicle itself. It does require us to respond on statewide emergencies, as we have always done through the statewide mutual aid system, but it's available to, for our use in the City of San Bruno locally, on a day-to-day basis, and within the county and the region as well. The San Bruno Fire Department has partnered with the City of South San Francisco, the Central County Fire Department, and the San Mateo County Consolidated Fire Department, who've all received these Type Six wildland fire engines. It's kind of a unique opportunity to have what we call a strike team of those five-like pieces of equipment in the same exact region, to respond locally for emergencies and statewide as well. And then, an important part to note is that the city and county of San Francisco have also received five of these wildland engines as well, so there's a total of ten in the region, which are really a unique piece of equipment that's specifically designed for wildland fires. So, it's really great that they're here in a very close proximity to our city and the region to be able to protect the peninsula. This new engine will be housed at Station Fifty-two on Earl Avenue, and this picture was taken today. We lined them all up, this is the Cal OES office at Mater, Mater in Sacramento, and we wanted to take a quick opportunity to recognize and thank Cal OES for that. And just our last thing for Wildfire Awareness Month is just a reminder that in late January, I proved the council and our residents on the region-wide effort for the Zone Haven standardized evacuation platform, and the San Bruno Fire Department is going to be rolling out that platform in the coming months. And in conclusion, I'd just like to thank the city manager and the city council for their continued support for our wildfire mitigation efforts throughout San Bruno. Thank you.
Thank you, chief, for that presentation and update, and I do see we have a member of our public who'd like to speak on the proclamation of Wildfire Awareness Month. A city clerk, can you?
Yes, one moment, I'm bringing him in. Jeffrey Tong? Jeffrey, I'm trying to get you unmuted.
Hello?
There you are. Hi, Jeffrey.
Hi.
Whenever you're ready.
Is this the section on wildfire, or is this the section on, what's it called? The Brown Act? Or is this a public comment for any subject?
Jeffrey, we, we've already done public comment, that was item three on the agenda. Right now, we are on a proclamation for Wildfire Awareness Month.
Oh, okay, my mistake.
No problem.
Sorry, bye-bye.
Okay, seeing no other hands, and chief, and I know, you know, you're thanking us, and you're thanking the manager, and all of that is appreciated, but also, I want to thank you and Gage, because as far as in our San Mateo County, we were one of the first to get one of these vehicles, and then I guess they liked your idea and other communities, so they started saying, how about me? How about me? But I'm proud to say that thanks to your initiative and the departments by having this, and of course, it is a safeguard for our canyon and for other areas, and we have that at our available disposal, and let me tell you, you got it for a good price. So, we appreciate that and having those resources available. So, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item E, receive update on storm drain and flood protection fee ballot election process, and we'll turn that over to our city clerk, I mean, to our city attorney, I apologize.
No problem. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Just a very brief update on this, so staff and others received a question about why the names of individuals and their property addresses are listed on the stormwater fee ballot, and I just wanted to be sure that everybody knew what the answer to that question was, but most importantly, why it's the answer. So, the answer is, yes, that's correct, it's required by state law. So, the next question is, well, why, why would that be? Why is that? And so, it's important to understand that elections for these certain kinds of property-related fees are different from your normal municipal or other local, state, or national elections. For example, in those elections, basically, every registered voter could vote, but these are property-related fees, so only property owners can vote, and under state law, both Prop two eighteen and Prop twenty-six adopted by the voters in California, the, it was determined that with respect to these particular ballots, the name of the individual who's voting, that is the property owner, and the address of the property have to be on the ballot, and furthermore, that those ballots are determined to be public records. And you might wonder, well, why is that? My other ballots aren't public records. And the answer to that is that in two thousand fourteen, the legislature adopted a new rule that specifically said that for these kinds of property owner fees and assessments, the entire ballot is a public record, both the name and the address of the, of the property. That was determined because there were some issues about certain agencies in the state of California that were conducting these elections with what the legislature believed was improper degree of transparency. So, this was an effort to make sure that both the electorate and public officials are able to understand what the results of the election are and why. So, all of those ballots, including the name and address, are public records, and so the city is required to follow state law, and we do follow state law. That information was published on the ballot, that it would be a public record, and so, while that is different than the other elections the city has had over the last three decades, it's been quite a while since the city adopted a property-related fee, those new laws do apply to these sorts of elections for property-related fees. So, I hope that answers everyone's question, and I'd be happy to answer any questions from, from many of you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any questions from colleagues? Seeing none, thank you, city attorney.
You're very welcome.
And now, we'll move on to consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented at an earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. Is there any item that colleagues wish to pull for a separate vote? Not seeing any, are there any items for questions and/or comments?
The chair?
Oh, and I, and I'm sorry, hold on, I apologize. I see we have a member of the public, so it might be for the last item, so city clerk, can we check, and then I'll get to the colleagues on the items.
Yes, Paul Wapinski?
No, it's for item five F.
Okay, thank you. So, Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, Mayor Medina, thank you. Just wanted to have the public share what item five E is about, the importance of that. Five F and five H, please, just some comments. Thank you.
Counselor Mason?
Echoing five E, also comment or suggestion, and I think that that's it for me. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so let's take five E, adopt resolution denouncing hate crimes and bigotry targeting Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders. We had, we may, we may have further dialogue, but let's just start with the vice mayor, and then counsel member Mason.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. A proclamation, I think we should, we should acknowledge it and perhaps even, even go ahead and announce it, it's just kind of odd that it's in the consent. I'm just, just wanting people to know how serious this council takes, how serious this city takes all hate crime.
Counselor member Mason? And then counsel member Salazar?
Yeah, so, I kind of, I just want to read a little something that I wrote that's related to this item, that it's, it's in general, it's easy to think that racial tensions don't exist here in San Mateo County, but I want to go back to not really that long ago, when a man named Sing Shang and his pregnant wife, Grace, decided to move to a neighboring suburb here in San Mateo County with their two-and-a-half-year-old son, and this was, I'm not going to name the city, because I don't want to call anybody out, because it's pretty egregious what happened, but after answering an ad in the San Francisco Chronicle, Mr. Shang put down two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars as deposit to buy a house in this neighborhood. Upon learning of the pending sale, the owners of the property received angry calls, letters, and threats accusing them of breaking the racially restrictive covenants of the subdivision by selling their home to the Shang family. The neighbors also lashed out on the potential buyers, accusing them of bringing down the value of the neighborhood. Mr. Shang asked that the neighborhood vote on whether his family could live there in a democratic way. Prior to the vote, Mr. Shang sent a letter to the neighborhood echoing the local and national media's framing of the vote as a triumph or failure of democracy in the United States. In fact, the neighborhood did take a vote, imagine if this happened today, to take a vote whether somebody can live in our block or our neighborhood because of what race we are. The city manager was the one who counted the votes. At the end of the vote count, fourteen people did not vote, twenty-eight voted in favor of the Shang family moving into their community, and one hundred and seventy-four neighbors voted against the Shang family moving into their neighborhood. One hundred and seventy-four. This was in nineteen fifty-two, not really that long ago, when you think about history. And so, when we look at this resolution and the hate crimes that we're seeing on a national basis increase against the AAPI community, it's important that we acknowledge that this history is not new, and that our obligation to stand up for each other really continues today. I really wanted to thank Chair Salazar and the entire Heart Committee for the quick turnaround on this very important resolution, on Mayor, so Mayor Medina for initiating the resolution, and I really enjoyed working with everyone, but wish it wasn't necessary to write a resolution like this in two thousand twenty-one, only about sixty years after that story I just told, which, by the way, is a real story and very, very close to San Bruno. So, thank you, everyone, for working on this, and of course, I'm going to support the resolution.
Counselor member Salazar?
Thank you, and counsel member Mason alluded to this, but I wanted to thank council and the mayor for allowing the Heart Committee to take this project on and allowing us to work on this, and I also wanted to thank the members of the Heart Committee, and especially counsel member Mason, who was very, very engaged in the process and putting this together and bringing a product back to, back to us here as a full council. And so, you know, I wanted to make sure that, you know, the members of the, of the committee were recognized for their contributions in this, and, you know, while this resolution may be words on a piece of paper, the process, I think, is also important in that we did engage with representatives of our community, and the statement that we are submitting to the council today is a reflection, a concurrence from those community members in, in terms of what we believe in and what we're recognizing as an issue. You know, without getting into, reading the whole, the whole resolution, it does state a number of facts, including the fact that there have been thousands of incidents recorded nationwide, hundreds just here in the Bay Area, and so, I mean, these are shocking statistics, but, but they are true, and our resolution also states in no uncertain terms that the City of San Bruno will not tolerate these things in our, in our community, nor our extended communities, and it does make a very solid statement around that, and so, again, I just wanted to thank everyone involved, and also, you know, put my support behind us unanimously approving this resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other hands, we're going to move on to item F under consent, and that is adopt a resolution appropriating seventy-five thousand from the general fund, consultant services to perform various economic and fiscal analysis in evaluating appropriate community benefit contributions for large-scale development projects. And also, what I'd like to do, and thank you for his patience, I'd like to bring Paul in who wanted to speak on this.
Yes, Paul Wapinski, I'm bringing you back in.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, in the, the staff report, it says this is traditionally something that developers pay for, but out of convenience, you want the taxpayers to pay for this. And I, I think you're probably going to, going to pass it, but if we do, we should get that money recouped back from developers and not have the citizens pay for, for this fee. And also, it's confusing because when I read the staff report, it says you're asking for $75,000, but the last sentence of the discussion says it's $75,000 per vendor per fiscal year. And that's not $75,000. That's what is the actual amount that is going to cost us this year and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And I believe Vice Mayor Medina, you also wanted to comment or have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Wapinski had pretty much the same question. In the staff report, it says some of the money could be recovered. And trying to, would like to know, why wouldn't all of it be recovered if it was a study that was necessary for the project that is under our approval?
Is there anybody on staff who might be able to assist in that question, please? City Manager?
Sure, Members of the Council, Javon Rogan, City Manager. Let, let me address a few of the questions, and then I'll talk a little bit more globally. To the point that was raised by Mr. Wapinski, the staff report does denote the signature authority of the city manager, which is $75,000 per year per vendor. This item is requesting a $75,000 appropriation for studies that cost anywhere as the staff report notes, between $20,000 to $30,000 for each study. In addition, the, the next question asked by the council member and Mr. Wapinski is reimbursement. It's important to note that the city's ability to negotiate for community benefits does not happen on all projects. It happens on projects when there is a discretionary action that will be before the city council. And there are times where it is needed for staff to engage with the developer and also hire an economist to inform our process in those negotiations. It has happened when that, when that process begins before there is a formal reimbursement agreement due to the pace of the negotiations and the pace of the project. It is helpful for us, so we're not delaying projects in entering into contract with the vendor on each study, to have an appropriation in place so we can have a vendor under contract and get them to begin work immediately. It also notes in the staff report that we, that we do anticipate that some of this cost will be reimbursed by developers when we have a cost reimbursement. It has been our practice that 100% of the costs have been reimbursed by developers. It is also possible that we can go down the path and begin to negotiate community benefits, but something can happen along the way where we are not reimbursed or the project does not occur. That sometimes happens, has not happened as of late, but we did want to cover that fact that we may expend some funds that are not reimbursed. I would say on the whole, given the magnitude of community benefit packages that we have been able to negotiate, oftentimes in the hundreds of thousands of dollars and the millions of dollars, this is money well spent, and it provides your staff with the resources to have economists that can analyze the intricacies of real estate transactions, often which, for some of our large developments, are real estate transactions and developments in the multi-million dollars, if not hundreds of millions of dollars. And the ability to, to bring personnel on to inform our negotiations is critical, and we do believe that it is money well spent. And for the most part, we do expect for it to be reimbursed. There may be the occasional instance where a development does not come to fruition or something happens during the entitlement process where the work does cease. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments by colleagues on, on item F? Okay, let's move on to item H. Item H is waive first reading and introduce amendments to the San Bruno Municipal Code, Chapter 2.36, to complete transition of the personnel board functions to the city manager's office and Human Resources Department. Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Previously, when this was first brought to the council's attention, I asked if the union was providing a letter of concurrence saying this was fine, and we got a verbal that, yeah, the union said it was okay. So I'm just following up to find out if, if we received any formal acceptance or concurrence of this change or any additional comments from the, the union representatives.
I'm seeing the Assistant City Manager and/or the City Manager may wish to address or have a comment?
Sure, I'm not seeing the Assistant, Assistant City Manager on. If she's on, she's happy to take this question. Not seeing the camera come on. Why, why don't I address this?
Okay.
City, the city staff has been in contact with the union. They have lent their support. We have not acquired a formal letter of that, nor a protest that has been submitted to the city. And so we are comfortable proceeding forward. This would, this change does not require the concurrence of the union. That's important to note. But we did talk about this with the, the city's labor unions and initially received their support and have not had to withdraw all of that support.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments on item H? If not, I think we've hit on item E, F, and H. Is there any action from council regarding consent?
Move to approach?
Sir, second? Okay, Motion Salazar, and second got in by Hamilton. And so roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Hi.
Councilmember Mason?
Hi.
Councilmember Salazar?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Hi.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to item number six, which is, City Clerk?
Item 6A, Adopt a Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Purchase Units for the Downtown Trash Receptacles Project in an Amount Not to Exceed $130,000 and Allocating $130,000 from the Solid Waste/Recycling Fund AB 939.
I'd like to turn this over to our City Manager, please.
Sure. Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of the Council, and Citizens. We are here tonight to discuss a item to purchase downtown trash receptacles. It may seem like a simple thing, but it is very important to the aesthetics and fabric of our downtown. We last talked about this item in a study session on March 9, and we intended to fund this project through the city's budget process, and you'll be receiving the proposed budget in June. And so you may be asking, why are we here before you tonight? Well, we're, we're here before you tonight because in proceeding down the path to select the trash cans and respond to the council member feedback, our discussions with one of the select potential vendors has revealed that they intend to increase prices due to increasing steel prices nationally as of May 31, 2021. And so should we want to move forward? There's a minor savings of approximately $73 per, per can. And so we wanted to bring this forward to see if we can have direction and an appropriation of funds, and then we would place that order expeditiously. So tonight's item is to provide input, is to provide the city council with information on two proposed trash receptacles and obtain feedback. You may recall, at that March 9 meeting, we presented nine options. Those were narrowed down to three. One, high-capacity trash receptacle placed at specific locations, and then two options for the standard single trash receptacles. The images that you have on the screen, the one above on the right-hand side is of our current trash receptacles, and the one below is actually a test that was installed a few years ago outside of Starbucks. And I think we, we talked before that with respect to durability and appeal, it did not hold up. And it's, it's, it's great that we are, we, we have tossed out that option. Again, a little bit of background, trash receptacle criteria. We'll talk about the options. We'll provide a recommendation as well as an alternative and take questions. And again, with the, with the goal, if we can, to have final direction here tonight on purchasing trash cans for downtown and potentially other locations in the city. So the council and the community may remember that the city completed a San Mateo Avenue conceptual streetscape and adopted that, that plan on October 22, 2019. And that plan really called for a lot. It called for a design palette to reactivate and revitalize the pedestrian fabric of downtown. And it also has certain standards for what street furniture should look like. But in reality, that was still a 10,000-foot plan, and bringing it down to the one-foot level requires additional study as well as implementation of specific projects. And the project we're talking about here tonight is just one component of moving forward with improving the trash receptacles downtown. It's also worth mentioning that on March 9, we talked about newspaper racks. Staff has not lost that. We are continuing to analyze that project and work with the newspaper companies. And we'll bring forward a recommended direction for council at a later time with regard to newspaper racks. So next are the images from the streetscape plan. Again, 10,000 feet, highly conceptual. And what you see is a lot of steel. There was an aesthetic decision to move away from steel and go to more warmer tones as well as products that did not lend themselves to, to graffiti. And so what you will see in the recommended palette for trash receptacles is in alignment with moving away from, from steel and going to more warmer, warmer tones. So there are a few criteria that staff uses, and we've talked about these before, so I will touch on them at a very, very high level. So a minimum capacity for the standard trash receptacles of 32 gallons as requested through our conversations with Recology. All the receptacles should have a lid or cover to withstand weather conditions, ease of maintenance. And we have discussed all of the potential options with Recology to ensure that they are serviceable without undue challenges. The material of the receptacle should be graffiti, rust, fire, and stain resistant. And there are currently 37 receptacles downtown San Mateo Avenue. You know, I, I neglected to mention that there is staff in the Public Works Department that is available to answer detailed questions. The last time you, this presentation was given to you, it was by our Public Works Director, who separated from the city to take another position. And so I'm, I'm pinch hitting tonight. So receptacle options. So at our last study session, the city council really chose the high-capacity Big Belly receptacles, both a recycling and a trash at specific locations. We, we talked about a few, and we'll, we'll note, those areas are noted in the staff report. We note three areas in the staff report, Starbucks, Roma's, and Citibank. And we will, we're looking at identifying three other locations and talking to Recology about which cans have the most trash and doing a survey of downtown. But Option A has replacing trash cans with up to six locations for the Big Bellies. And then the, the difference between Option A and Option B is the trash receptacle. On March 9, the city council tentatively took those eight options for trash cans and narrowed it down to two. One is an embossed steel trash can as shown in Option B, and the other is Option A, which is the Steel Do More Trash Can. And the feedback we heard from the city council on March 9 was it is a aesthetically pleasing can, but concerns about durability. And so we'll, we'll talk about that in just one short moment. So as a reminder, the Big Belly kiosks, those are double-station kiosks with both recycling and trash. There is a standard capacity of 50 gallons. We are recommending the higher capacity that has 150 gallons, and it is solar and compactable. And, and as we know, there are locations on San Bruno Avenue where, I'm sorry, on San Mateo Avenue, where the trash does overflow. And having these larger capacity cans is, is something we've talked about. While cost should not be the only factor, it's worth noting that the standard capacity is 4,500 per kiosk, and the, the higher capacity is 9,300 per kiosk. It's worth noting that we are continuing to evaluate a five-year options for, a five-year service options for each of these six receptacles. It's roughly $200 a month, so that's $1,200 a month or $14,400 per year for the six high-capacity. The city can cover this cost through our existing revenue from the 1% AB 939 fee without any additional funds needed from, allocations needed from the city council or, or ratepayers. So Option A, the, the 32-gallon Do More Trash Can, this is the option that staff is recommending due to the aesthetics. And this is also the, the can that is at Earl Lindy Park. It has, it has a waist hood, it's 32 gallons, heavy steel at 194 pounds. Cost is roughly $1,500 each. With regard to durability of the wood, staff has communicated with the vendor, and they are able to offer a slight customization on this product and replace the wood with a recycled plastic. And it's a plastic wood that is a, a heavy-ditch resin that is more durable and easier to maintain. And so in the image above has the, the trash can. And they didn't have an image on their website, but we did want to, want to provide a cutout of the recommended color, which I believe is an antique mahogany with a textured charcoal can. The, the next option, which admittedly is a lower-cost option, probably beauty is in the eye of, of, of the beholder, but it is a 38-gallon can. It's lighter, so 62 pounds, and that unit costs $620. It is slightly more capacity. It is slightly more larger in its footprint than the other can, but it is an option, and it is an option that the, the city council centered on as well. So at a high level, staff recommends Option A, given its alignment to the aesthetics in the downtown streetscape plan. The estimated budget for equipment only is $105,000. And that's again for six, six locations for the Big Belly and 33 locations for the trash receptacle. It's worth noting that there are 31 locations currently on downtown, downtown, but we're, we include an additional two because we know in the fine analysis, there may be a desire to add it, add an additional trash can or two somewhere. So an alternative is, while there are a total of 39 locations downtown, there are an additional seven trash receptacles along El Camino and Cherry Avenue that are serviced by Recology. And so if we include those, it's a total of 46 stations at roughly $115,000. And the city is recommending that, should the council want to move forward, you approve an allocation of $130,000, which would include the ancillary cost of affixing them downtown and, and trash removal of the existing cans. And with funding paid for from the city's AB 939 fee, which is a And with funding paid for from the city's AB nine-three-nine fee, which is a one percent charge on, uh, uh, solid waste collection and small-stake grants, uh, there's approximately four hundred thousand dollars in that fund. Uh, and annually, uh, we receive, uh, about fifty to sixty thousand dollars, uh, in that one percent fee, uh, over the, the, over the, the life of that fund, it hasn't been as low as twenty thousand dollars. But, but given the current revenue generation from that fund and the accumulation, uh, we are able to cover the cost of, of this trash can installation as well as, um, pay that annual ongoing, uh, service cost for the, the Big Belly, uh, solar high-capacity trash receptacles. So, that concludes, uh, the presentation, we are, of course, here for questions, uh, if I can't answer them, uh, hopefully, um, uh, we, we have staff within the Public Works Department that can. And again, uh, thank you for, um, uh, these continued conversations, and, uh, we're looking forward to moving forward, thank you.
Thank you, City Manager, for the report. Um, and if any members of the community, uh, wish, would like to speak on this item, if you could, uh, raise your virtual hand, and we'll call on you very shortly. And then the only thing, um, I, I know you gave us the numbers of, of, um, cans. Did we assess whether we need to replace each can, i.e. does it need to be thirty-seven, gonna be thirty-five, based on whatever Recology had felt is, uh, works or doesn't?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that. Uh, the recommendation is to replace all of the cans, uh, for a consistent aesthetic look downtown. In addition, the cans are in various states of, uh, disrepair, uh, some of which you could even call dilapidation. Uh, we have not gone through a, uh, analysis of what cans are in, um, uh, uh, a condition where they, where they, uh, have a useful life, uh, um. I, I think aesthetically, uh, um, uh, there, there, there has been, uh, I believe, a desire to, uh, re- replace them, and that's the direction we've been going down. But again, we're happy to, um, replace some and, and keep others.
Okay, thank you. Um, City Clerk, why don't we, uh, please bring in the members of the public, which is to speak on this item?
Yes, first is Julia.
Hello?
Hi, whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Um, as a San Bruno resident, former member of the Beautification Commission, and someone who has done cleanup since San Mateo Avenue, I am excited for the addition of new receptacles in the area, but would like the council and staff to consider the following, uh, probably in the future. Um, one, adding receptacles next to every or more chap, trash receptacles to encourage recycling even in non, um, high-traffic areas. Much of the litter I remember picking up was recyclables, a lot of it was glass. Um, just adding back the same receptacles doesn't necessarily mean less litter if we aren't educating the downtown community. I did like the note from the city manager about surveying existing receptacles and the level of trash in those receptacles. Um, okay, and consider matching the colors of the receptacles, especially for the Big Bellies, to be blue for recycling and black for landfill. I realize that might, may not match the aesthetics, but it helps with the education and in getting the right materials and the right receptacles. And, um, if the city cannot do any of the above, um, please, please add signage in English and Spanish indicating landfill and recycling. And also consider images of accepted items for each receptacle and prohibited items, especially on the Big Bellies. Um, this helps in education and reducing contamination in each of the receptacles, even if it's minimal in nature. Um, I know Mowbray, um, downtown has receptacles with signage on it, um, that are Big Bellies. Um, there is no point in adding recycling if it is constantly contaminated, and to further education from home with our three carts and bins, and now to public spaces such as downtown. Um, especially since I live near a park with no signage on the receptacle, so it's really confusing, so, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, uh, next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Stephen Seymour.
Hello, Melissa.
Hello, whenever you're in.
All right, hello, City Councilmembers, um, first of all, I'd just like to thank you all for, uh, the place that we are at today. Um, uh, this discussion is, uh, a, a healthy one, and I, I really, um, appreciate, uh, the previous speaker and what she added in terms of recycling and, uh, messaging. Um, I, I would like you to think about, uh, some of these existing ones that, that are on the avenue today, maybe they could be refurbished. Um, I've seen a lot of, uh, these type of containers that are, uh, done in mosaic and really make quite interesting, uh, art pieces and also are, are usable. I, I realize that, um, when we're talking about recycling, um, maybe they don't offer that, uh, that ability. But, um, in, in terms of looking at the cost, uh, maybe some of them could be, uh, kept and turned into interesting art pieces in, in certain areas on the avenue, and you could reduce the number of the new ones that you're buying. Um, that aside, uh, I really, uh, appreciate the fact that you're looking at this and that we're gonna get rid of what has been an eyesore on that street for an awful long time. But, um, I want you to think about possibly keeping some and, and, uh, maybe turning them into, uh, art pieces that would bring and attract, uh, visitors to the avenue. Um, those visitors would stay and, uh, shop and eat in our restaurants, and, uh, might really kind of set, uh, San Bruno aside. I, I'm not sure, I, I can't think of anywhere on the peninsula where I've, uh, seen the kind of mosaic that I'm talking about, but certainly if you Google, uh, you'll find all sorts of, uh, trash container, trash receptacles. Uh, that are the exact ones that we have on the avenue that have been refurbished and then, um, turned into interesting art pieces. Those are my comments, thank you very much for carrying this conversation and for, uh, doing something about, um, the despicable trash containers that have been on that avenue for a long time, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, uh, next speaker, please.
Jeffrey Tong. Jeffrey, I'm trying to get you unmuted. There you are. Hi, whenever you're ready.
Uh, City Councilmembers, um, would like to recommend the cheaper, higher-capacity, uh, uh, alternative, but the most important thing is easiest to maintain. My guesstimate is, everything is gonna have graffiti or whatever, people vandalizing it, so whatever's easiest to maintain, um, that's the number-one priority. Um, looking at Bart, uh, they, they chose a lot of things, well, on their trains to make it more aesthetic, but when you have, uh, more comfortable things. Easiest to maintain is the most important thing. Uh, with regards to high-capacity, I would believe that Bart is one of the most important places to put the high-capacity, uh, trash cans. Lastly, I believe that a high fine is important to discourage people from littering, and most importantly, um, dumping things. Particularly with dumping, uh, the fine needs to be ten thousand dollars, because there's a lot of people who are doing this seemingly on a professional level, collecting money and just dumping things on the street. Um, so, those are my comments, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, and I think we, I'm not seeing any more hands from the public, so why don't we start with first, uh, Councilmember Mason, then we're gonna go to Councilmember Hamilton. And then we're gonna go to Vice Mayor Medina, then we're gonna go to Councilmember Salazar.
Okay, great, thank you, um, I'm trying to put my hand down. Just a, a couple of quick follow-up, um, well, follow-up and new questions, but, um, at the last meeting when this was presented, I had asked about the maintenance of the cans. Um, and Burlingame does a regular maintenance of power washing the actual cans to make sure that the, um, can't, you know, the cans stay in good condition, they're clean. Um, and we had been told there was gonna be, that they'd look into it, staff would look into it, and then come back to us. Um, I'm not sure, with these new cans, can we make, if, if you don't have the answer now, can we make sure that they get on a maintenance schedule handled by our San Bruno team?
Yes.
Okay, um, okay, I will probably follow up on that, because I do think it's really important, I think that's part of the demise of our existing garbage cans, is that there just doesn't appear to be any regular maintenance of them. Um, the other question I had was, um, last time we had been presented the cans with the magazine racks, are the magazine racks coming back to us as a, as a different item?
Yes, uh, the magazine racks will, uh, follow a, a different, uh, path, we are fast-forwarding this item, uh, due to the price increase on, on steel.
Gotcha, okay, um, and then, uh, are, I think, um, he said it in a, I think, clearer way than I would have written it, but, um, Mr. Tong caught, talked about maintenance of the cans. Um, that I, the idea around the graffiti, around just the, um, cleanliness of the cans on a day-to-day basis, is that something that, is there a cost associated to one can that's not associated to the other can?
I think there, there are multiple parts, uh, to, uh, to the answer to that question. Uh, I think it goes back to your, your initial question about having a maintenance schedule or, or program, uh, for the, for the trash cans. Absolutely, the city can, uh, put together a plan to power wash the cans. Candidly, uh, what, uh, may be required is a level of effort, uh, that we cannot accomplish right now, given our current staffing and workload demands, um, to power wash on a more regular basis. And so, that may have to come back with a reconfiguration of staff assignments and/or, uh, a different plan for maintaining not just trash cans, uh, but, uh, the app. So, just candidly about that, that is something that we need to do more study and more investigation about, because it's trash cans and others. But with regard to, uh, the best can for maintenance, and, and why don't I talk sort of about the trash receptacles, uh, the embossed version versus, uh, the new more version? Both of them can be power washed, uh, both of them, uh, do not have, um, the type of slaps that the pilot that we have in front of, uh, Starbucks have, and so they lend themselves, uh, to being cleaned easily with power washing. The Dumont version, because the vast majority of the, of, of the surface is the recycled plastic, uh, the comment from, uh, staff is that we believe that it will lend itself to a better long-term maintenance. Uh, because constantly power washing steel erodes the way, the, the paint surface, and then you get to the, the, the metal and then rusty. And so, we do believe that the Dumont version will provide a better, um, uh, long-term, uh, a, a better lifespan and aesthetics over the long term. With sort of regular and recurring power washing, which I believe, um, uh, is envisioned.
Okay, and then, um, what about if there's any, um, I guess, once we get the cans, are there, if they end up not holding up the way that they're being advertised to hold up? Are there any safety warranties or anything that we're making sure we get for the cost that we're paying to be able to return them or exchange them?
Yeah, well, there are standard warranties, I, I, I cannot quote them right now, and I, and I, and I, I won't try, but, but absolutely, there are standard warranties with the products, and, and we will certainly, um, uh, uh, monitor them. And, uh, should there be a need, uh, to activate one of the warranties, do that, uh, within enough time to have them replaced.
Okay, and then just, um, around the Big Bellies, the other areas that I, I, um, I think that may warrant them is, I feel like, um, and it could just be me, but look, in front of Los Primos, there, there's always garbage overflowing. Um, to the point where it appears that people actually bring their garbage and just leave it next to the garbage can. Um, but that's a, I feel like that's a really high garbage area, and then the, in front of Signores Pizza. Um, just to, uh, I don't, I don't really know how much, um, is gonna be direction at this point, you know, since you're already gonna be ordering them, but I do think those are two areas that are constantly overflowing, there's constantly, and as a result, you get garbage all over that whole area. Um, so if there can be anything done to add some larger garbage cans, that would be wonderful. Um, thank you, thanks for getting this back to us.
Um, let's go to Councilmember, uh, Hamilton, please.
Thank you, so, uh, most of my, uh, most of what I was gonna cover, uh, was, was covered in the conversation with Councilmember Mason, so, um, so I'll keep it, um, quick. I want to thank, um, staff for, uh, answering my, my pre-questions about the, the maintenance, um, especially of Option A. Um, you know, when we first looked at this and the, the, uh, Dumont option that had the wood, I was very concerned about the wood not being able to stand up, and that's why I was leaning toward the other one, which I didn't like as, nearly as much aesthetically. But was worried that, you know, that the, simply that the wood wouldn't stand up, so the, this, um, resin, uh, option, um, really seems like the, uh, the much better option, and that, that can be maintained and cleaned. And I appreciate the very, uh, detailed, um, uh, information that was sent in response to my question about how it could be cleaned. Um, so much information that I'm wondering if you're asking me to clean it, because I have enough information to do it myself now, um, so thank you for that. Um, so I am, uh, I am, uh, supportive of Option A, and, uh, very appreciative to staff for bringing this back to us so quickly, thank you.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, uh, thank you, um, thank you, staff, for the, the research, um, just wanted to follow up, uh, on a couple of items. But for the, for the Big Belly, um, do we, does that cost include the, the foot pedal option? And, um, for, for the model that, um, in Option A, do, did staff, um, obtain any feedback from any other city that, that is using that model? Um, to, to, to hear from the customer how well it handles, it, it holds up, instead of relying on the, on the vendor? And my last question is, um, for the graffiti proof for the Big Bellies, is that wrap, can that wrap be, uh, customized to where, um, it could be some totally different message? Of whatever we want, similar to the, um, utility boxes that are, um, that are around town that got painted, uh, that was overseen by the, uh, Culture and Arts Commission?
Sure, uh, so, two questions. And the, can the wrap be customized? Absolutely, uh, on the Big Bellies, it is a wrap and it can be customized, um. But with regard to, uh, the foot pedal option, uh, the option that we are showing both has the hands and the foot pedal, uh, uh, and, and so that, that is included. Uh, and, oh, the, the, the third question, which is have, were we able to contact other cities that had the, this, the specific trash can? The answer is no, uh, but we were able to contact ourselves, uh, because that trash can is at the Earl Lynnview Park. Uh, and, and so we, uh, staff did, uh, take a look at, uh, the one at Earl Lynnview Park, uh, and is happy with the, uh, uh, both the quality and how it's holding up.
Okay, uh, m- sorry, Mr. Mayor, I have one, one last, um, one last thing, um, from Jeffrey Tong's question. Um, I've heard this many times, hey, why don't you just increase the fines? But I think our city attorney will be able to answer it much better than I, um, that there's a limit to what you can fine somebody. So I was wondering if somebody can, if he can give an answer for Jeffrey Tong about the higher-fine option.
And, uh, our city attorney, yes, and I was just pulling up his email, which, uh, I, I could read, but I bet you it'll come, uh, uh, much better from him than me reading, uh, the email, so, city attorney.
Thank you, uh, well, if, if you read it, I'll be sure not to forget anything, so, uh, the basic principle is that the fines that are set forth in the San Bruno Municipal Code are those fines that are the maximum fines allowed by state law. And, um, some residents may wonder why other cities are able to consider charging fines of ten thousand dollars for certain violations. And one answer to that question is that those, uh, cities are allowed, or at least authorized, to issue fines up to that amount if otherwise adopted by the city council pursuant to a charter. However, I do want to caution, um, everyone that, uh, the fines issued by cities for any violation of any municipal code are always subject to constitutional scrutiny. Under the excessive fines and penalties clause of the United States Constitution. And what's important to know about that is that, um, one person who believes they have been charged an excessive fine can sue in federal court, sue the city and recover their attorney's fees. Um, not, not just for, um, that particular case, but may also be able to recover those fines that were paid by other members similarly situated to that person in, for example, a class action. So there is a substantial legal risk associated with implementing or adopting large fines for really any sort of violation where the, the fine may be seen as not proportional to the violation. And just to get one quick example of that, there's a case pending right now in a federal court out of Los Angeles County in which somebody was fined, I think, $53 for a parking ticket. And under Los Angeles's charter, the fine is doubled if you don't pay it on time. And that person is suing on behalf of himself and others for the doubling of that fine as an excessive fine. So that lawsuit is, of course, anyone can sue anyone for anything. But it is, it is likely that those kinds of lawsuits would cost any city literally hundreds of thousands of dollars to defend, even if they ultimately prevail, and all for, you know, a $50 fine. So we really do have to be careful with these things. We do understand the desire of both city and the public to ensure that, for example, dumping does not occur or is deterred. But generally, increasing the fine to a very large amount is likely not going to gain compliance unless you can catch the violators.
Well said. Thank you.
And then, since on that, there was a comment about BART. But to my knowledge, and city manager will know, that is, that BART's property, they maintain those? Or am I incorrect? So therefore, we would be spending taxpayers' dollars from San Bruno to help BART, which that is their responsibility.
That is true. The trash cans in front of the BART station are maintained by BART. I do believe there are some on the outside of the rear mall entrance, and those are maintained by the mall as well.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, what are you, done with your questions?
You know, actually, I, I'm not. I wanted to express my support to the concept of refurbishing the garbage cans. If not for perhaps a separate project, maybe they could be reused for the schools or some other public agency that would appreciate a mosaic on a garbage can. But currently, I think we should move forward with what we have now. I do appreciate the interest to save $2,400 in bringing this forward. So thank you, city manager, for that. As for the power washing, this seems to kind of be a refound source of funds with this AV. I lost the number here, but that we would, we could potentially include that in next year's budget. So those are my final comments. I am supportive of Option A.
Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you. So I think like all of my colleagues, I, I'm glad to see this moving forward. We definitely want to do something to address the appearance of our downtown. And as someone who's participated in Clean Sweep and spent time repairing those other trash cans, I can attest that they do suffer from a great deal of neglect and poor maintenance. You know, not only is the surface hard to clean because of the pebbled finish on it, but a lot of the metal portions of it that comprise the door and the opening and everything are so severely rusted that it's, even with the coat of paint, it's hard to make them viable again. So it will be nice to have something down there. As I expressed last time, I still have a little bit of concern about the $10,000 garbage cans. To me, it still seems excessive. And I'm not thoroughly convinced that they will address the concerns around the garbage cans filling. And maybe I'm not looking at this, or misreading the specs on these. But from what I understand, we're getting 36-gallon roughly normal garbage cans versus a 50-gallon high-capacity garbage can. And it seems like even two, just getting two regular garbage cans would give you more capacity than one of these super garbage cans. And, you know, the capacity in those comes from the fact that they have a built-in compactor. But, you know, looking at the guts of it on their website, you know, it looks like it's a very small-capacity container, and it just kind of gets mashed down. And so in the end, I don't know if we're really getting the bang for the buck and paying that much more per unit, where we could possibly on busy corners put two garbage cans or add garbage cans catty-corner from each other in areas that need it more. So it seems to me that that would be more cost-effective, especially if we're still going to be paying for the same amount of service to those garbage cans. And I know that the compactor models have the benefit where you service them less often because they can accumulate more. And so maybe you don't pick up every day, you pick up every other day. But we're not getting that benefit. We're still going to be paying for emptying all the garbage cans every day. And so there's no real benefit to it. So if staff wants to speak to that, that would be great. I saw in the staff report that they mentioned the solar variety of these. And then there was a picture of one that was the non-solar variety. And I believe that in the staff's presentation, there's a reference made to the solar one. So I wanted clarification on whether we would be getting the solar version of it or not. Because if we're not, then that would require having to run power to that location, which is probably not currently there. And then also the availability of enough daylight in those locations to actually charge these things enough to keep doing their job. So, and also saw in the staff report that there was discussion about lease versus buy on those. And I'm wondering if staff was recommending one way or the other? Is staff recommending a purchase? And if it is a purchase, then is there additional maintenance required in order to maintain the mechanical portion of that thing? And if not, it sounds like the option would be a better demand. And then finally, on the funds that we're pulling from to do this, I was curious as to, and I haven't seen this come up before. I think Vice Mayor Medina kind of alluded to this too. It's like, okay, we're not, we've been collecting this money for a long time, but we haven't really talked a lot about it. And so I'm wondering what other demands or constraints there are on those funds that we should know about or perhaps be concerned if we're going to be consuming those for this project? Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager, please.
At a high level, I'll address the questions with regard to Big Belly and the options that are recommended for purchase. So we are recommending the high-capacity solar version, which has a, with compacting, 150-gallon capacity as opposed to the 32-gallon regular trash can. So it is significantly higher. And you're absolutely correct. The double stations do cost $9,300 per station. And they also, we are evaluating, but I do believe that we will build into the budget including the $200 a month lease fee for the software, which includes the warranty as well as alert monitoring for when they're full and additional software upgrades. And so we will build those in and appropriate the AV939 funds. And the city has not programmed the AV939 funds. They are eligible for this use and eligible for solid waste-related items. It is a fund that we have analyzed and looked to potentially utilizing funds for illegal dumping-related activities. As the council knows, we are currently working with Recology and with the contract amendment that we are pursuing with them for supporting the city with illegal dumping. We want to see how that goes before appropriating additional funds from this fund to support illegal dumping. But you're absolutely right. There, it has been a source of funds, the 1% on solid waste, that we have accumulated. While I have not been here the whole time those funds have been accumulating, I do know that cities accumulate those funds to be able to do things like this. Because finding $100,000 to fund trash cans out of the general fund when you're sort of balancing between normal city services is challenging. And so accumulating funds like this that trickle in over years is a best practice. So you can replace all of your, all of your infrastructure, in this case, trash cans.
Councilmember Salazar, did you?
So just for clarification. So yes, we are getting the solar versions of it. It sounds like staff is recommending purchase versus lease, but there's also ongoing maintenance costs even if we purchase?
Yes.
And software, oh, and back to the funds. So there's nothing within the intent of that particular assembly bill that collects that fund that would require those funds to be used for either reduction or redirection or something else, rather than just providing receptacles?
No, we did analyze that in the city attorney prior to this recommendation, did do an analysis, and using them for receptacles is an eligible use.
Okay, just wanted to verify that. And, okay, all right, that was it. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Mason.
Thanks. I just, I'm sorry, I meant to ask this earlier. I did agree with the speaker who mentioned that we should have multilingual signs. Will that, would that be, do you need direction on that with this item?
I think that is certainly possible. We have not designed the custom wrap for the Big Bellies. With regard to the single cans, we were not envisioning having signage on those because those are single multi-use cans for both trash and recycle. So if we design the custom wrap in the language, certainly we can include multiple languages.
Okay, for the Big Bellies, you're saying. Okay, and then my other question was going to be, if in the future we see that there's, I guess, increasing garbage on the, in the regular-sized bins, I'm wondering if, would it be possible and would it look funny to partner it later? So let's say in two years, there's more and more garbage. Could we get another one of the same garbage cans? Is it going to look, you know, is it going to have faded? And then they'd be side by side as a garbage and recycling bin?
Well, yes, there is generally the option to add an additional trash can. And I think what you're articulating is to add a recycling receptacle next to it. Typically, that is possible. I cannot guarantee at this point that in three or five years, when we make that decision, the vendor will be making the exact same trash can in the exact same color. But in general, that is possible.
Okay, so then, and then the last comment was going to be, I, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think anybody's saying that we're expecting city staff to create art out of the existing garbage cans. But I do think that it's a good idea to, if there's space, I actually don't know how much space the city has, but to store some of those garbage cans in case that could become a project later. Knowing now how much garbage cans cost, I would definitely support that. I know that it would be a space issue, though. So if there's space to store them, maybe somebody does take an interest later on in actually restoring them and placing them somewhere else in the city. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Salazar.
Just, yeah, one last question. Since these smart garbage cans have the software running on them, it's going to be generating data. We're going to be collecting metrics on our, on our new garbage cans? And can we expect some reporting on that?
Great question. Cannot commit to the frequency of reporting. But absolutely, the software does come with data, and we will look into that and see how that appropriately fits in with providing performance metrics to the city on how much trash individuals are throwing away downtown.
Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Well, Councilmember Salazar, it looks like you got everybody's attention on that last question. You know, I think what I have been asked, and I know that you, staff's taken a look, but it's like, you know, people perceive for four to five blocks having that many garbage cans is, you know, are they all needed or necessary because of the cost? I do appreciate that, I think, one of our concerns was about the side material and whether it's graffiti. So having that into something a little different, I think, helped address that concern. So I appreciate that. And then, you know, I do believe that, again, the concern is on the recycling, because obviously, if the wrong stuff goes in, it's contaminated. So then therefore, that's one of those issues that even in our own community, we're having to help educate each other, because that's happening and that, which increases the rate because of the way it operates now. So I think just, you know, I think it's nice to go forward. I had some of the same concern on how many Big Belly versus, you know, where we're at. And also just as far as that number is, just for me to be reassured, we've looked at that, we've worked with Recology, and we really believe that you need to replace each one.
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'm seeing no other hands up at this point. So, council, it is a resolution? Is there any action by council?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase units for the downtown trash receptacles project, utilizing Option A as noted in the staff report.
Is there a sec? Oh, okay. So is there a second? First, I'm going to go right to the city manager, because he wanted some clarification, which is, thank you for asking.
Doug.
Okay, there we go. Hamilton, Medina, and city manager, please.
Sure. I just wanted to clarify, that is with the additional, with the addition of seven trash cans throughout the city. And so that brings the total number of single receptacles to approximately 40. That budget comes to 115,000. Again, that is only for, that is for equipment only. We're asking for an appropriation of 130,000 at this time, which is enough to cover the equipment. And that is sufficient for the larger amount of trash cans.
Just through the mayor, I'd like to amend my, amend my motion to clarify that this includes the seven additional units not for San Mateo Avenue and authorizing the amount not to exceed $130,000.
And with the second, is that good?
That's good.
Thumbs up?
Thank you.
Thank you for, city manager, thank you for getting that clarification before we do the vote. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Hi.
Councilmember Mason? Councilmember Mason? Hi. Councilmember Salazar?
While I remain skeptical about the Big Bellies, I'll vote yes.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina? Mayor Rico Medina?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to Item B, please.
Item 6B, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute in agreement with Ludorf and Skelmanini for the design of the acapella well replacement project in an amount not to exceed $610,000.
I'm going to turn over to Haywon Ritchie, please.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Haywon Ritchie, city engineer for San Bruno. I would like to turn this presentation over to Dahlia Manaus. She is our associate civil engineer who is working on the acapella well project.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council and members of the public. I'm Dahlia Manaus with the Public Works Department, and I'm going to share my screen. Okay. Okay, so I will be presenting on the acapella well replacement project. The objective for this presentation is to provide background information on the acapella well replacement project, project phasing and schedule, and also to recommend council action to authorize city manager to execute an agreement with Ludorf and Skelmanini. Moving forward, I'll be referring to them as LNS. Oh, excuse me. Sorry, let me. On the agenda. As, sorry, excuse me. On the agenda, we have, we will cover the acapella well replacement background, project phasing and scheduling, scope of work, staff recommendation, council questions, public, public comment, and council deliberation.
Dahlia, on this, can you click this place settings? And it's duplicate the monitor, so we're seeing the full slide.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, okay.
Slideshow.
Is that?
Can you go to slideshow at the top?
Oh, okay, slideshow. Sorry, is this better?
That's perfect.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry about that, I apologize. Okay, so on the agenda, we will be covering the acapella well replacement background, project phasing and scheduling, scope of work, staff recommendation, and conclude with council questions, public comment, council deliberation, and action. So as we are aware, the city owns and operates its water system. The city operates five groundwater wells that extract, treat, and pump water into the distribution system. Four wells are currently active and one inactive, and that is the well 15, also known as Commodore Well. So well 15 had been a significant source of the city's water production until it went out of service in 2010 due to low production requiring constant maintenance. So in 2012, the city procured Ehrler and Kalowalski Inc., also known as EKI, for engineering design services for the well 15 replacement. The scope of work included constructing test wells and the design of the production well. The following year, in 2013, the city evaluated six potential well sites for the well number 15 replacement project. And two sites were selected, Acapella Site and Commodore Site, were found to be best suitable for a new well for reasons related to the likelihood of high well yield production rate located away from existing city wells resulting in less interference from other wells, no additional impact on the surrounding environment, and the ability to provide the additional supply to pressure zones three, four, and five without additional infrastructure that includes piping or pumps. In October of 2013, staff present, presented an update on well 15 replacement project to the city council with the recommendation to proceed with the design and award of a construction contract for the two wells. So one at the Acapella Site and the other at the Commodore Park Site here. You see in the circles. The first test well would be installed at the Acapella Site and the other at the Commodore Park Site. So the first well would be installed at the Acapella Site, and if the results were favorable, the city would not drill the second test well at Commodore Park Site. And this would result in substantial cost savings. In addition, the city would avoid any disruption to the dog park at Commodore Park. The city council concurred with staff's recommendation. The following year, in September 2014, construction of the test well at the Acapella Site was completed. Drilling logs were analyzed and water quality sampling was performed at the new test well. EKI concluded that a production well installed at the Acapella Site should be capable of producing similar to the production rate of several other wells in San Bruno. So the water quality sampling data was reviewed and it was concluded that a production well installed at the Acapella Site would yield a combination of water quality and production rate satisfying the city's need, and additional test well would not be necessary. So during the conceptual design of the production well, it was determined that the required building footprint for the wellhead treatments facilities needed to be larger to accommodate the filters, piping, and electric, electrical equipment. So the ingress and egress for the well site was obstructed by an adjacent vacant parcel that I've highlighted here in blue. So due to these site constraints, the project was halted. And in 2017, Monogram Residential Acapella, the property owner of the adjacent parcel at the time, executed a grant deed to transfer ownership of this adjacent parcel to the city in which the city accepted on July 7, 2017. So by the time the city acquired additional real estate to move forward with the project, both the city and EKI had experienced a turnover with the team that had originally worked on the design that would necessitate the submittal of a new proposal and had insufficient funds to finalize the design. Staff determined that the design of the production well and facilities could be phased as another project and proceed with issuing the request for proposal. In January 2021, the city issued a request for proposals which was posted on the city's website and sent to multiple consulting firms. One proposal was received from LNS. Staff conducted an evaluation on the received proposal and has determined that Ludorf and Skelmanini is highly qualified, has demonstrated accurate project understanding, has substantial design experience on water role projects, and has successfully completed similar design projects for various water agencies across the state such as San Jose Water Company, SFPUC, and the City of Mountain View. And the proposal cost is $610,000 and within the current budget of 1.8 million available in this fiscal year. So the Acapella Well Replacement Project will be completed in two phases. The first phase will consist of designing and constructing a production well. And this includes drilling, water quality soil sampling, well construction, and well development with an estimated completion of about 12 months. And the second phase will consist of designing and constructing the well facilities that includes necessary housing, pump, motor, automatic control equipment such as SCADA, and discharge piping and disinfection equipment with an estimated completion of 18 months. So the scope of work for the Acapella Well Replacement Project includes preparing bid documents and construction support for phase one and two, also obtaining approvals and permits from regulatory agencies, and preparing required regulatory documents. And the scope also includes decommissioning of well 15 in accordance with California's Title 22 Code of Regulations related to drinking water. So staff is recommending city council to adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with LNS for the design of the Acapella Well Replacement Project in amount not to exceed $610,000. And I will turn this over for any questions and discussions.
Thank you for your presentation, I appreciate it. And if there's any members of the public that wish to speak, if you could raise your hand at this time, wait a couple minutes and I'll turn it to council members for questions. Any questions from council at this time? Okay, let's go to the public. I'm, I know the city clerk will correct me, but I see no hands at this time. So we will end public comment on this topic and we will bring it to council for questions or comments. Excuse me, councilmember Mason.
Thank you. So I think I just kind of need a little bit of a better understanding of the risk involved of not approving this tonight just because it's half a million dollars. What is there in immediate, is there, is this an immediate need that can't be part of next year's budget?
Sure, councilmember Mason, I can help to answer that. Haywon Ritchie, city engineer for San Bruno, good evening. There is currently CEQA exemption for this project because it is replacing well 15. But we have been advised that if we wait too long to construct this project and get it underway, that that CEQA clearance could expire. And so, you know, in an effort to not go through the environment, you know, go through the environmental process of clearing a new well, we would like to move forward with the design as soon as possible.
Okay, so then, if the, this is, sounds like this is really for the design from the staff report and from what you just mentioned, but the actual construction in the staff report is listed as $3 million. So are we going to be able to, are we going to be able to produce this, you know, this design, this project, to get it up to the place where construction would actually occur? And then are we going to be able to fund the actual construction? And they're all kind of part of the same question is, without the $3 million for the construction, are we going to be in compliance with CEQA?
Yes, and so this first phase will be the design. And we hope to, you know, go through the design and then we will have to budget for the design, or sorry, for the construction once those estimates are better known. And we are undergoing the budgeting process right now and we will budget to what is necessary in order to construct the project at the appropriate fiscal year. It could mean that we proceed with the design now and then budget for construction in fiscal year 2023, so 2223, so that we can award thoroughly part of the next fiscal year. And of course, we work closely with finance to ensure that we have adequate funding in order to meet the project needs.
And then I can see the city manager's hands up. I have more questions, but he may want to answer this part.
So thank you to the mayor.
Yes, please.
I just want to point out that, councilmember Mason, your question begun with potentially holding off till next budget cycle. I just want to make it clear that there's not an appropriation request with the action that is before you tonight. The money for this project was built into the current budget, which is typical for these projects because you sort of go on this stair step ladder of design and then budget for, for construction. It's also worth noting, because I spent the last few weeks in very detailed capital budgeting meetings with all of our, with all of our staff, is that we are going through a practice of budgeting for the dollars that will be expended in the fiscal year that that work will occur versus saying, oh, we have a $3 million project, let's budget all that money today. And so we are moving to a best practice, which is to plan out your expenditures over the multi-year cycle that they will occur, which actually decreases the amount of revenue that you need to generate to the fund. And so it's important to note that this sort of stair step process where we budget for design and then we budget for construction is totally normal, totally envisioned with how we plan these very large multi-year projects.
Okay, helpful. So then, in that case, the, should then the actual construction be also a portion of it budgeted then in the next year? Would we anticipate that in June as opposed to 2000, the following year, if it's 2023?
My recollection is that we are budgeting to design for this fiscal year. But that does, like the question of whether we'll need to, you know, potentially pre-appropriate a little bit earlier if we do to get design done quickly and need to move to the construction phase. So that is possible, but I think currently we are budgeting to design until we have a better idea what the construction cost would be because the first phase of construction is the production well. And there, there may potentially be adequate funding in order to award the construction of the production well. But of course, I think the next phase, which is the building and the pumps and the electrical, that will likely not occur until the next fiscal year. And so we would request that appropriate amount at that time.
Okay, yeah, just so what I don't want is, I don't want another, you know, sign or plan and then not move on, not have the funds or not be prepared to move on to the next step to, for this whole process to come to fruition. The other question I had is, you mentioned that, I think, Daly City, South City, actually, it's in the, pull up the staff report, that there's kind of like this GSR partnership, South San Francisco, Colma, Daly City, and San Bruno. And so what are, this is, you know, over half a million dollars. What are their contributions to this effort?
So the agreement is more in agreement with SFPUC. And you'll have to excuse me, I don't know all the details related to this agreement, but my understanding is that we have an agreement with SFPUC during the wet years to not pump and that they would provide us with drinking water supply. And then during the drought years, then we would use the groundwater wells to supplement and, you know, relieve a little pressure off of SFPUC. And so those are called the take years. And so they're actually paying us not to pump currently. And then we will be pumping later when we need to supplement with our groundwater well when, you know, there's more drought years.
Through the mayor, if I can supplement that answer.
Please, city manager.
It's also important to note, the city engineer was absolutely right. They do pay us not to pump, but it is an asset that the city of San Bruno has its own wells. Most, a number of those cities do not have their own wells. And the fact that we have our own wells, which provides sustainability and a resource here, also means that we have to do these projects to rehabilitate them and ensure that they're functioning. And so while we are getting money, it's important to note that this is our asset that provides significant benefits that we pay for locally.
Okay, okay. And then is there a benefit that would then, I guess, end up saving money for our residents at some point? And do we have any projections of what that would look like?
I think they would have the security of having a groundwater supply that not other, as city manager Grogan had mentioned, not other, not many other agencies are fortunate to own their water enterprise and have the facilities to produce water to meet the demands. And so I think that would be the benefit. I can't say that we did a dollar cost estimate, but I think there's, you know, inherent value in having that supply.
Okay, I think that's my questions for now, thank you.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you for the report. Yeah, this is a, this is one of those projects that got kind of lost. But here we are, dealing with it, right? And my first question is, I'm a little surprised by the lack of proposals received. And I don't believe this, this designer worked with us before. Did staff get an opportunity to kind of find out? Were people too busy? Like, why, why, why did we only give one proposal?
Yes, we, we wondered the same thing and so we contacted them. It was a variety of responses at one firm we've worked with. Apparently, they changed their processes and so they weren't able to, they didn't, I guess it slipped through their cracks, which is not a great answer. And, you know, I think they're kicking themselves and I think that is something that we really considered. We really took care in contacting the, the references to see what the references were like because I personally have not heard of them either, but they had very positive referrals. And so, I mean, we posted it on our website as well as emailed out to 12 different firms. And, you know, we got a response back from a firm that we had worked with previously that was not one of the 12 that we had emailed. And so they had taken the initiative. I think, you know, had their references come back, you know, potentially questionable, we would have, you know, readily re-advertised. But in an effort to, you know, keep the project moving and because we did do our due diligence in getting references, we opted to proceed. and because we did do our due diligence in getting references, we, we opted to proceed.
Right. So I'm always a little apprehensive when, you know, we're, we're dealing just with one bidder and it's, it's hard to, to determine if we're getting value there. But here we are. I'm in, I'm in favor of, of, of this project. And thank you for some of the questions that I asked earlier today. This, this well will, will generate or increase the capacity of our system twenty-five percent. And apparently our water is produced at half the cost of what we buy it for. So every gallon, every, every unit of water that we get is, is, is a savings. So I wanted to, to let people know about that because it's, it's, it's really unique that we have our own water system. And, and for years, we weren't reinvesting into our infrastructure of getting this water out. And this, this well's been out of service for twelve years. So we, we need to make sure, and as, as a beloved Chris Palace would say, you know, water is life. And, and, and here we are in a drought here and, and we're trying to work out that we, we do have an agreement to deal with that a little bit. So the question for the well abandonment, is that cost covered in, in, in this part of the project? Or that's, that's a separate cost for abandoning, abandoning the, the current well?
That would need to be designed. I suppose I could go with either, although it would potentially make more sense to go with the latter phase of the construction because the initial phase is the production well and might not really lend itself to, you know, the type of contractor who trolls wells.
But, but, but this would be part of their scope to oversee the design of the well abandonment. That all gets approved by the, from the state. But that would be something they would manage in this six hundred and ten thousand.
Yes, so the decommissioning of the well.
Okay, okay. And, and I guess, I guess the biggest, the biggest issue that I have with, with this project right now is, is I, as I look at the Capital Improvement Program, page two ninety, and it, it has the cost there of forty-six thousand dollars and construction of the one point eight million. So I, I think, I'm, I'm, I'm guessing and giving staff the benefit of the doubt, this is, this is one of the projects that kind of got lost. And there is no money budgeted for years twenty twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two through twenty-four, twenty-five. So that additional three million to build the well isn't anywhere. And, but this is the reality we're facing, that in order to build this well and the facilities, we're going to need to spend that money.
Correct. And we will need to design it now when we have sufficient budget to pay for the design right now. And this is part of one of the projects, you know, of the many projects we're looking at for the CIP budgeting process to make sure that it's adequately phased and funded appropriately.
Got it. And, and because it's in these numbers here in this, in the CIP, the council eliminated the rate increase in our water and sewer for this year because a big reason was we had adequate funding available to complete, to continue operations. So this additional money that currently is not shown in the CIP, it's, it's, we, we'll, we'll have enough funding in our water enterprise to, to go ahead and cover this. It's not going to affect operations.
Why don't I ask the city manager to chime in on this, please?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Medina. And, and Councilmember Medina, I think it's important to back up before we go forward. I don't think it's a correct statement to say that this project was lost. The, the city made progress on a number of water and sewer projects. And this one is now bubbling up and, and we are now moving forward on this project. In addition, with regard to the CIP form that you're looking at, what I, which I believe is in our adopted twenty twenty-one budget, what you're seeing is that the projected costs in the out years are not there. That does not mean that the city does not have sufficient funds within the water fund balance to cover this project and other projects. It is true that the city did cancel the fifth five percent rate increase because there are sufficient funds in the water fund. I just had asked staff to confirm for me the balance in the water fund, but I believe it's over ten million dollars. And so while the infrastructure that we have to do is significant and there, and, and that's, that ten million is actually in the, 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 the operating portion. There's over forty million dollars accumulated in, in the water fund. And so as we project out all of the projects we need, there is sufficient funds to cover those projects. Now, that does not mean that we may not have to increase water rates in the future. And we've had those conversations with the city council before, that when you go a, a number of years without increasing rates, then you have to do a larger increase. And so we do have to do a, a five-year rate study in the next calendar year. And we are planning, in the next fiscal year, and we are planning for that. But I just want to caution council that because there were not funds shown in those out years, you should not conclude that the city does not have sufficient funds to move forward with this project. And, and have larger conversations about the water fund through our, our capital budgeting process.
I, I, I appreciate that answer. I, that's why I asked the question, making sure that there was funding available. So I'm sat, I'm satisfied with that answer. We do need to build this well and I'm in favor of this project. Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton.
So I just wanted to share, as you all know, I'm our, I am the city's representative on the Bousque Board Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, which manages our relationship with the SFPUC to ensure we have a voice in, in the, the agreements to get water from Hetch Hetchy. The, you know, we heard, we heard as part of the staff report that, you know, how, how things operate, you know, when we're in wet years, we try to let our aquifers, the local aquifers replenish so that that water is there for dry years. In twenty eighteen Sacramento, the state legislature in Sacramento adopted the approved Bay Delta Plan. And if that stands, there's currently, there's, we're, currently the, the board and, and the SFPUC and other agencies are bandied together to try to get an alternate plan in place. But if that plan stands, the, the, in multi-year, multi-year drought years, when we have back-to-back-to-back droughts, which are going to be more and more common as we move, move forward, we could face up to fifty percent mandatory rationing over, over current levels because of the amount of water that the Bay Delta Plan would, would require that we not take from the Chualami River. So it's so critical that we have, we're very lucky to have our own local sources of water. And it's important, it's very important that we maintain the infrastructure to be able to get at it. So I'm, I am absolutely in favor of this, of this project. One question that I have is, once we, once we have the design, would we, would that put us in a position to apply for, for state or federal grants to help with the construction? Are there any, are there any opportunities that we're looking at out there that might be available to us to help us with those construction costs, considering it would be a water infrastructure project?
Certainly opportunities, as they present themselves, we will look at those. And, you know, we can keep an eye out for those even during design. I don't think we necessarily need to wait until design is over. If the state or region were to provide funding, we certainly look into that and, you know, apply as appropriate.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you. And, and so I just wanted to also express my support for not just this well, but the existence of wells in general in, in San Bruno. The vice mayor mentioned Chris Palace and it definitely would be remiss of us if, if Chris Palace's name were not mentioned whenever wells come up because he was a very staunch advocate for, for first bringing wells to San Bruno. And they've proven, although expensive to maintain, a valuable and important asset to the city. And we've been without this well for a while. And I think looking forward at our infrastructure, this will be an important part of it. And so I just wanted to add that. No other questions.
Now, as was stated by the vice mayor and Councilmember Salazar, yes, I remember Chris Palace was probably one of the few on the council then that was very adamant about doing that and having the well supply and that it does save for us not having to buy as much. But then we obviously have to, we had to, we were required to balance with the aquifer that we didn't take too much. But, but needless to say, yes, that was one of his passions. So these are important things that we need to keep up and take care of. And so, yes, I as well am in support and appreciate my colleagues' questions and engagement in this. And it is by action of a resolution. Is there any action by council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion Medina, second, and Salazar. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item C, please.
Item six C, appoint a San Bruno resident to fill one vacancy on the planning commission.
Okay, earlier today, thanks to our city manager, he had sent us voting instructions. But I also wanted to make sure that we all understood, or if there were any questions, or just to make sure before we begin. And if there are, if you could let me know or let us know before we start.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes. I, I think this was a little different. We bounced back and forth on the appointment process. And the proposed one, I, I, I really don't like. I, I, I think we should continue using the process that we put in place when we did the Measure G appointment of, of allowing a first and a second for whichever candidate or applicant. And then work our way to, to voting for those that get a first or, I'm sorry, that get a second in, in the nomination process.
Councilmember Hamilton, there you go.
So I had asked in my, in my, in my, you know, pre-questions, you know, to, to get a rundown of what the, of what the, the process was because I knew that the process was new. I kind of knew what it was, but it wasn't clear. And it was, you know, there was multi-rounds and there was an Excel spreadsheet and all kinds of stuff was happening. And I wanted to make sure that I understood it because I didn't want to waste time in this meeting learning it. But then when we got these instructions today, these weren't familiar at all. So is, I mean, is this a, another brand-new procedure we've, that we, we haven't followed before? Because the, the, the last one seemed better than this one. And both of them seem better than the, than the historical one of rushing to, whoever gets their hand up first, puts, does a first and a second, and then a vote happens, and then that's it. So, you know, the, I'm, I'm in favor of a, of being able to have a first and second on as many candidates as there are firsts and seconds, and that gets us to another round. And then we talk about each, each, each of those and, and vote on, and, and vote accordingly. And, you know, have as many rounds as necessary to get to a decision. I think that would be, that would, the, the process that's been laid out here, I think, could, could lead to, you know, a stalemate and, and, and us going back and not, not getting to a decision. I would, I would never want that to happen. And I also want to make sure that all candidates get a, a fair shake.
So, and people can correct me in case my memory is not as good. But at the last time we appointed a planning commissioner, every person was able to say who they wished. There was two votes for one particular candidate, two votes for another candidate, and one vote for another candidate. And then we had a second round and then votes switched and it became a three-two at that point. And that's, that's how we did it. We put the, the Excel spreadsheet on the screen because due to Zoom, it was a little confusing with Measure G. And everybody was like, boy, I thought this vote happened, I thought that. And that's why the clerk was then showing us as it, as it occurred so that we could have a, a, a good record and that in case it was misheard, that we can correct it instantaneously instead of trying to go back and replay or the minutes. So that is what we did last time for planning commission specifically. Any other comments from council members? Okay, so I, so what we have heard is we, we saw the written instructions. The vice mayor has said to do it differently. I just want us to be able to get through the process and we can always refine it. And I think when we meet in person again, it's going to modify itself again because obviously we'll all be there in a room some, at some point together. Councilmember Salazar?
I, I was just going to add that, you know, I, I had a little bit of input into the process. And, you know, part of what I thought would be a little bit less rushed or, or forced for us would be for everybody to at least get one nomination and have everybody an opportunity to speak either on behalf of one or two or, or more candidates and have a little bit more of a, a discussion. Because historically, what we've done is just thrown out a name and voted and never really had any discussion. And it, it ends up being, you know, if, if, if you already have somebody in mind, then, you know, you're going to advocate for your person. But maybe, you know, one of us could be swayed or one of us could think, oh, I didn't think about that. Or, or somebody could say, yes, but, and so, I mean, I, I think, you know, the, the candidates, you know, they, they were all, you know, they, they all have something to offer. And they were all very sincere in their, in their offer to serve. And so I, I thought this process really offered an opportunity for everybody to at least have, and we have four applicants. There's, there's five of us. Conceivably, everybody could get nominated and they feel at least that they were acknowledged in some way. It, it could be that we all naturally gravitate to one person, maybe not, but at least we have an opportunity to discuss that process. And so it, it's, and it is new. As Councilmember Hamilton said, it is a little bit different. I, I don't think it's dramatically different from the last planning commission one. But it does offer at least that opportunity to have a discussion and to have all of the applicants on the table to discuss.
And, and then the other, the other thing too was, as we did some committee commission and boards, again, Zoom makes it a little more daunting, is that once we got to three, so if the first three people said the same person, then we were done. So, and last year for a couple appointments, the mayor and the vice mayor, because they go last, didn't have an opportunity to even vote. It was just, it was just done. We moved on. So anyway, just as an FYI. Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a suggestion that we continue this item because we're going to be having because we're going to be having a policies meeting anyway at some point where we're finishing up our processes. And instead of just kind of going back and forth now, I don't want to embarrass any, any of the applicants who might be waiting to find out if they are nominated or if they're selected with us going back and forth on what the process is or could be or should be. So my suggestion would just be maybe to table it. We're going to have, we know we're going to have one more meeting around policies and procedures and that we direct staff to make sure that this item is part of our discussion. And then we come back with an agreed-upon process at the next meeting in two weeks. Just a suggestion.
Really quickly, Councilmember Hamilton?
Well, to Councilmember Mason's point, I don't know that we're, I don't know that, is the policies and procedures next session agendized? Is that, do we, it's not even agendized, so I don't, I don't know if we would be able to come back with this in two weeks.
No, but we know, we know that we have one more meeting left from the last meeting and we can discuss it when that meeting is agendized.
My only other
Please.
I, you know, this, this spot has been vacant since I left it. It's my, this is all my fault. But the, so I, you know, I don't want to leave it vacant too often. But one, the reason I raise my hand again is if I'm reading the, this, these instructions the way that I think I'm reading them, the, the situation, Mr. Mayor, that you just brought up, could, could happen. Because the way that we're going to run through this is each council member will be called by name to give their, the name of the applicant they wish to appoint, starting, and it would be, it sounds like it would be starting with me and then going to Lyndon and Michael. And if the three of us all pick the same person, then Vice Mayor and Mayor don't get a vote.
Well, that's
Or at least it would be moot. Because
Well, I think, I think, I think we should be allowed to vote. I don't think it should stop just because
No, 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 I understand, I understand that. But I'm just, but it's just saying that with this, it says the named council member will state the name of the applicant they wish to appoint. They can express their thoughts and then they go to the next one and the city clerk will keep a tally. The first applicant whose name is stated three times will be appointed. So if the first three of us, as we're moving through the process, pick the same person, Rico and Marty are out. And that doesn't seem fair.
Okay, so I, I think, so we've interviewed folks. I agree that we should move forward with the appointment. People are waiting. And I think when you want to volunteer your time, you don't want it made difficult. And I do, we do appreciate those folks that are, that have applied. So very quickly, Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you. Just avoid being repetitive. It's exactly what Councilman Hamilton said. And we've had this vacancy for too long. I think we're really, really close. I don't think we have to spend much more time on this. I do appreciate the addition of where a council member, a council member may express their thoughts on the candidate. I think that's, that's nice. Clearly, we had a great pool of applicants. It's just that I think, I think we should, we should not move forward with the current proposed voting system that we received at four sixteen today. I think we should spend the time to modify it and move forward. This council is capable of doing that.
I'm going to go to a conference room, I mean, city manager? City Manager?
Sure, just for clarification. Absolutely. It's clear that the city council does not have a established voting practice for how you appoint members of your CDCs. We're going through a policy and procedures process to define that. I agree with all of the statements that have been mentioned to say that at least in the last two years, there have been three processes. Knowing that there was not a, a process that was agreed upon in having communications with the mayor, what staff did was we sent out the very last process that was provided to you back in October of 2019 when you went through a process to appoint a number of members of your boards and commissions. And the only addition was that highlighted section which clarified that council members may articulate why they are selecting someone. So I just want to point out that that process is not new. It was just sent out to provide a guidance because there was an open question on what process you would follow tonight. Should there not be agreement, my recommendation would be to simply go back to how you handle everything else. Just to have a nomination and a second and discuss it. But I would recommend that you allow the city clerk to put up the spreadsheet so there can be a track and a tally of the vote. And then absolutely, at our next policy and procedures meeting, we need to have a discussion about how you will appoint members of the boards and commissions. I do think lastly, it is important to take this action tonight. You've had four people that have applied. You've had a vacancy for several months. And with the projects that we have coming before the planning commission, given that we are a small city where people live, knowing the new conflict of interest rules suggests that people should recuse themselves if they're within a thousand square feet. You can have various people recusing themselves and it's important to have a full complement of your planning commissioner. And so, again, the recommendation is you just develop a process that is essentially how you handle every other decision you make, which is have a motion and a second. And you can do that for each candidate, talk about them, and then have a vote. If there is a tie, for example, if two people receive three votes, I recommend that you have another round where you are only voting on those two people. If someone receives four votes, and that's the highest vote, either five votes, I think that person is selected. But if, if, in the event of a tie, there's a runoff.
Yeah, and that's normally when we were in person, we would do the, again, Zoom has just made it a little more not complicated, but you know, we're trying to do the best we have. So why don't we just, just to move this along, why don't we go ahead and we'll do, we'll ask the city clerk to bring the sheet up on the screen, if she would, please. And then we'll do a motion and second, but with the understanding that we're going to go through every name. My understanding, and every, correct me, is that you can, you can actually do more than one. And, and if you also at that time want to offer, as the Councilmember Salazar said, some dialogue, that's okay. But I would say it's about the person or persons that you're wishing, but it's not going to, I would prefer not to have back and forth about who's better or who's not because for all these four individuals to be interviewed and go through this process and have to do Form 700 and have to do this and that. We appreciate them stepping forward after their Okay, is everybody all good? Okay. All right. So why don't we go ahead and I'll turn it over to the city clerk, excuse me, to start to call the names, please.
Okay, so we had four applicants who interviewed with the city council on April 27th, 2021, and those applicants are Marco Dorato, Tom Kuhn, Fong Lee, and Supria Perry. Do I have, or I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, but I'm going to ask, is there a motion for Marco Dorato?
Yes, so we would be asking, is there a motion and is there a second?
Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, I make a motion for Marco Dorato.
Okay. I'll second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second by Vice Mayor Marty Medina and the second is by Councilmember Mason?
And Hamilton.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did I correct Tom?
Yes.
Okay, and Hamilton, okay. And Mayor, did you want me to read the rest of the names or do you want to finish off the vote for Marco Dorato?
No, I think what we agreed was we go through a motion and a second and then see. So we'll go to the next
Okay, the next applicant is Tom Kuhn. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Salazar and a second by Mayor Rico Medina. The next applicant is Fong Lee. Do I have a motion? I do not hear a motion. I'll give one more chance. Do we have a motion for Fong Lee? Okay, no motion. Moving on, we have Supria Perry. Do I have a motion for Supria Perry?
You know, I'll move for Ms. Perry. No she's
Is there a second for Supria Perry?
I'll second.
So we've received a motion and a second for three of the four applicants. The first is Marco Dorato, the second is Tom Kuhn, and Supria Perry is the third. Moving back to Marco Dorato, I'm going to take a roll call vote.
Through the chair?
Discussion.
Yes, and council, both council members, one was already there and the other one was right behind, is that if there wanted to be as to why the nomination? Is that fair, folks? Counsel?
Thank you, yes.
Okay. So with Mr. Dorato, is there comments from the nominees? Nominees, nominators?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to speak on behalf of Marco Dorato. He's a respected family man in San Bruno. He served loyally to the Traffic Safety Parking Committee. He's supportive in our community as well. He's articulate and did very well as all of the applicants did in the, in the interviews. And he would serve us well on the planning commission.
Thank you. Mr. Hamilton?
So I also want to say before I get started that we had an incredibly strong and talented pool of applicants who interviewed. And I promised only say this, this part once, just looking at the criteria that I'm looking, that I'm, that I'm looking for in a planning commissioner. I believe that the ideal planning commissioner is someone who is meticulous and disciplined in order to be able to closely study the projects that come before them, to ensure they meet the various zoning and other requirements, that they recognize the desperate need for developing new housing in our city and in our, in our region, but while also being mindful of the community that is here and find the appropriate balance to mitigate impact on our existing neighborhoods. So I'm supportive of Mr. Dorato because he is a pillar of the San Bruno community. His commitment to giving back and leaving the world a better place than he found it is evident not only in his work in the community through the Lions and in all his other volunteer efforts, including his work with the TSPC, but also extends to his choice of profession. He's a college professor. His commitment to both the facts and to the city of San Bruno make him an excellent choice for planning commissioner. And that's why I'm proud to support him for this position.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Councilmember Salazar?
Thank you. And I know that I, it sounded like we were only going to make comments on the person who's, who's going to be voted on, but I, I wanted, I did want to make a point in that, that there's nobody on this list that I want to vote no for. Honestly, everybody represented themselves and their intentions extremely well. And I was very impressed with, with the whole group. And the one question that I was asking every candidate, and we all, we all kind of came in this with, with with kind of an idea of what we were looking for. My question to the candidates was, how do you see your role on the planning commission? And, and to me, that, that was a critical question because it really got to the heart of how well do the candidates understand what they're getting into, what their responsibilities are, what their limitations are, and, you know, do they understand that, really the technical requirements? I mean, we're, we're fortunate that we have actually two former planning commissioners on the council now and they understand what it, what it took to get up to speed. And I know it's not, and planning commission probably more than any other one of our bodies really has a lot of requirements. And it's the one that requires a Form 700 because there are some decisions being made there that are financially impacting decisions. And there was really one candidate, someone whom I've never met before, but I felt really understood not only the process, but all the mechanics of how things were done, had a lot of industry knowledge and to me represented somebody that was going to be able to not only hit the ground running, but actually bring a lot of expertise in that. And that's why my, my nomination was for somebody else and I'm going to be supporting that applicant. And, but I just, I, I felt that I needed to say that a no vote comes difficult for anybody that's on this list.
Well said, Councilmember Salazar. And I was going to go to the next candidate and the next candidate to have those opportunities. So to me, we're not voting yet. We're going to move on to the next candidate and then, of course, you may have already articulated what you wish, but welcome just to say that. So let's move on to the next candidate. And then if there's any comments or Mr. Salazar, if that was already for Mr. Kuhn.
Since we're on to Mr. Kuhn now, I will just add that I felt that his answers were very detailed. It was obvious that he had studied not only our plans, but thought very carefully about where our needs were, what direction we should be going in. And really demonstrated to me a really solid understanding of not only that, you know, the, the mechanics and the thing, but very specifically what San Bruno would require. I listened intently to his responses to the other council members' questions and I felt that out of all the responses I heard, his were very thoughtful, very knowledgeable. And he was, he was definitely, in my opinion, extremely well-prepared for, for the interview and for the position.
And quickly, I would agree with a lot of your comments. I was also impressed with his answers in reply and obviously bringing even a visual to the interview, I think is the first time I've seen that. So that was also impressed me as well. I won't repeat everything that we're saying. And then let's go finally to Ms. Perry. I, I made that motion and that was because she has applied. She also had a experience when she did some remodel at the house. So I found that, that very interesting that she's walked through the shoes of the residents that come to the counter and had that experience. And so I thought that was, and of course, her background as well. And that is why I had also made a motion for her.
And through the chair, if I could, I would echo the same, a lot of the same comments that I felt that her, her, her level of intellect and her professional experience as a, as a lawyer really, I mean, she was able to articulate very well the terms of the understanding of the legal constraints of, of what she was going to be getting into. That, you know, the fact that there are, it's not just there to sort of, you interpret things as needed, but rather, you know, deferring to staff and, and being able to interpret, not reinvent what's been established. And I think that's, that was an important factor for me in hearing her answers. And again, I also thought she was very well-prepared.
Okay. All right. So everybody's had an opportunity on, there's a Vice Mayor, you have your hand up, but
Yes. Yes, I mean, I, I wanted to repeat that this was an outstanding pool of candidates. I mean, it's just like, and it really, and it really isn't voting no for anybody. There is only one spot for, and there's four applicants. And we're not saying no, we're choosing the, the, the one person that we believe will, will, will perform the duties of the planning commissioner. And unfortunately, there's only one spot. So I think all of the applicants, and they, they were all very well-prepared. And, and these positions come, come, come back and, and 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 for those that aren't gonna get it, I I I hope that you stay encouraged. I believe our council member uh Mason, it took three tries to get on the planning commission. And and it's it's okay if you don't get on the first time. So um I'll leave it at that and uh I thank everybody for applying.
I think that all of us, before we start back up at the top of the page, would all uh support and concur with everybody's that uh it is a hard decision. We were very fortunate to have a good group of folks that are willing to give up their time and their energy uh for the city. A vice, um, I apologize, uh, Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, just just one note that the three that I see now that we're gonna vote on, I think what is really exciting, not not biased, but really exciting is that we're seeing uh a lot of young families um getting more involved. And I was, I thought the answers that all three of them gave were really wonderful and um and just just hearing, I think, the thought put into the answers around what the future of San Bruno looks like for their young kids. Um, it's one of the reasons I got involved in the first place, and so um I I want to echo what everybody said, that if you don't get selected this time, very strong group of candidates. And um and we, I I definitely hope to see some of the candidates again, uh, if actually all the candidates again, so thank you.
And 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 as as was said, um, I I applied for a couple of uh a commission or a board and I was not uh appointed, and so I tried again. Um, so anyway, um, okay, so what I'd like to do is start back to the to the um. Uh, to uh bi-alphabetical and we'll start to take a roll call vote on on the candidate. If a candidate receives three or more votes, then there is obviously not the need to proceed to the next person or that has been decided, but we will get through everybody uh on on the roll call, okay? All right, uh, city clerk.
Uh, yes, yes. Um, okay, so we will start with. We will start with Mark Marco Durazzo. He received a motion and a second from a motion from Vice Mayor Marty Medina and a second from Councilmember Hamilton. And now I'll do a roll call vote, we have Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Salazar?
I will withhold my vote at this time.
Okay, and Mayor Rico Medina?
I'll I'll do the same, I didn't know we could do that, so that kind of you just threw me a little bit. I was like, okay. Uh, well, but 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 right now, obviously, uh Marco Durazzo has three affirmative votes. And therefore he would be the planning commissioner uh appointed, no?
Well, we need to go.
Oh, okay, I apologize. Here, here, I was, I was, all right, let's go to uh the next, let's just do it like you're saying, let's go to the.
So to confirm, Mayor, you are um.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead, Melissa.
I just want to clarify, Mayor Medina, just to know for sure, you're holding your vote as well, correct?
Yeah, until we go through the list, yes.
Okay.
So I I'm sorry, process question, can someone please explain to me, I've I've never heard of withholding the vote during the vote, so can we talk, it's always been yes, no, or abstention? Can someone explain to me how that works?
It's an abstention. I'm abstaining from voting.
Oh, so we're not coming back to, we're not coming back to get your vote later, it's an abstention from the vote completely?
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Thank you for asking.
And Mayor, I assume you're abstaining as well?
Yes.
Okay.
A a a process question, I mean, I I I I don't want to make make assumptions, but I'm assuming an abstention is because no sounds like, no, you suck. And we know that that's not true for any of these people, so we're using abstention.
You're absolutely correct.
Okay. I just want to make, I just want to make sure that that, you know, that folks watching.
All right, let's 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 proceed, please. So we can get, we have people waiting.
The next applicant is Tom Kuhn, I received a motion from Councilmember Salazar and a second from Mayor Rico Medina. Roll call vote, Councilmember Hamilton.
Abstain.
Councilmember Mason?
Abstain.
Councilmember Salazar, I assume?
I I'm a yes.
Yes, okay, um, Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Abstain.
And Mayor Rico Medina?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Moving on to Supria Perry, I received a motion from Mayor Rico Medina with a second from Councilmember Salazar. Roll call vote, uh, Councilmember Hamilton.
Abstain.
Linda Mason, Councilmember Linda Mason.
Abstain.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Abstain.
And just to confirm, um, Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
And Mayor Rico Medina?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
With these votes tallied, we have three votes for Marco Durazzo, two votes for Tom Kuhn, and two votes for Supria Perry, which means that Marco Durazzo is, has been appointed to the planning commission.
And congratulations to Mr. Durazo, as well as thank you to the applicants who have applied. And I would even like to see, uh, city clerk, we can, we can work on this tomorrow or or something, but maybe a letter that goes out to candidates. Uh, and thanking them for their time and their interest and uh continue to be engaged. Uh, and again, um, before we know, we could be looking later this year or next year and there might be another uh position available. So uh, but I think uh this is, you know, a lot more that they go through in the interview process and the type of deliberation. So I'd like to just let them know that it's very much appreciated. Um, Linda, uh, Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, I think one of the, um, I just want to say that one of the um areas that there's a lot of complaints around uh with development that's coming is around traffic. So I think we're gonna have a really strong um group up there who has the traffic background, the technical uh knowledge of the background. And then also just knowledgeable around what's expected of a committee versus a commission and what's really wanted and desired uh for the benefit of San Bruno. I do want to say that um City Manager Grogan made a really good point that would be helpful in the next round um of any of the appointments. Is as we look at um the areas where people live and recusals, if we could have an idea of what we should be, what should we be looking at? Are there certain areas where there's no representation? Um, cause I I don't, I don't think coming into that, I had really thought about where, I don't know where all the planning commissioners live, to be really honest, so I wouldn't know what's not represented. So if that's something that we should be considering, then if uh if you could provide us with that information in advance, that would be really helpful, thank you.
Maybe that could be done in policy procedures, I mean, we do, we see it on the applications, the addresses, so we know where the applicant resides.
And not the existing planning commissioners.
Well, we know where some of them do because we, or for us, maybe you've been on a little bit. Uh, but at the same time, too, I I'm gonna turn to the city manager before I finish uh my thought, uh, city manager, please.
Sure, uh, just a clarification, uh, the point that I mentioned is that it's important to have a uh full planning commission because people may have to recuse themselves. It, you cannot consider residency and where someone lives as a part of the criteria for selecting uh individuals, which is why we do not provide that information now. However, there are conflict of interest maps uh that are generated um for each of the me, each of the meetings, so uh we know what the the five hundred foot and one thousand foot buffer is, so people have the ability to recuse themselves. But it's just not something you can 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 consider when appointing, which is why that information uh has not been provided.
Thank you, city manager, um, and thank you, council, for your discussion and action. And now let's move on, may to item number seven, comments from council members. We first have Linda Mason, and that's what we heard about a little bit earlier, but welcome Peninsula Museum of Art to San Bruno. And then anything else you'd like to add, please?
Thank you, um, I am really excited actually to welcome the Peninsula Museum of Art. I think that, um, you know, there's a lot of talk across the country around repurposing malls and how they're gonna be repurposed because they're not as used as as when they were first built. So I think this is a a great idea, I'm I'm hearing that there might be more opportunities for artists within Tanfran, so I I hope that does come to fruition. Um, but just a huge thank you to Tanfran and Linda Larson and her team, who's been working closely um with the person who was in charge of the Peninsula Museum of Art, which is Ruth Waters. Um, and she has actually passed the baton on to Christina Chahill and Megan Camra. Um, in addition, I wanted to also thank Boris Kudran, who's an artist locally here in San Bruno, who's really helped to mend that really, build that relationship, I should say, between uh Tanfran and the Peninsula Museum of Art. So um for those of you who are interested in in visiting, they're open at eleven AM, they are preferring appointments right now as they build up their volunteer base. Um, and they are also looking for volunteers. So if you haven't been, I think uh you should definitely check it out, it's a really nice space, they have an original Benny Buffano, they have um artwork by Joe Johansson. Uh, who had originally had this piece that's now in Tanfran in one of the uh larger museums in San Francisco. Uh, I also wanted to just say that I checked out the Cappuccino High School art exhibit um this past weekend, and that was being uh shared at the Society of Western Artists. And we have some really talented high school students, I must say, and the one painting I wanted was not for sale, they wanted to keep it for themselves. Um, but if, uh, I I don't know, I apologize if it's still up, I think it was just for the week, but um just a congratulations to cap students, uh, just really well done um exhibit. So that's it for me, thank you, uh, thanks, Mayor Medina.
Thank you, council member, uh, other colleagues have, um, Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Yes, and first want to apologize for the uh in advance for the length of my comments. So um with that, first, uh, thank you to everyone who participated in the in the bulk clean up. Um, that was staff, the volunteers, and the residents, you know, getting getting things disposed the right way, avoiding putting stuff into the landfill when it could be diverted uh and recycled is really important. We proved again that by working together, we get more done. On a similar note, the next community cleanup event is on May twenty fifth, nine forty-five AM to to noon, with the lunch provided. Um, stay tuned on social media for a time and, uh, I'm sorry, for the exact location. Uh, this is a group of various residents that get together, clean up parts of our town. Uh, it's been wonderful uh working with everyone. Second, um, I have been asked by residents regarding the usage of private property in public streets for construction project storage. For years, private property in streets have been used by the city's contractor to store their material, to store store their materials and operation their construction lay down yard. This activity needs to be better managed, kept cleaner, and if staff could please review these operations and get these locations cleaned up. And please report back with all the legal requirements. I will also be uh formally request requesting the creation of a downtown improvement ad hoc committee. Uh, it's something that uh was brought up uh at a previous meeting. We also need to start planning on how to resume the various community activities, how to how to have a posy parade. Apparently, we're not gonna have a community day, how to, how how will we have music in the park? Um, I was recently asked if Relay for Life could come back to uh San Bruno just yesterday. And with these items, we need to to wait to find out how the conditions change and whether we can really be allowed to have them. But things are looking good as we're in the yellow tier. We also specifically need to know where our youth will be playing soccer this upcoming season. Currently, the Crestmore Fields are locked and no one could access them. What will this council do to assure there will be an adequate space to play for our community? Lastly, as we move into this yellow tier, we we need to remain careful. We got this far, let's not blow it, let's keep on doing the right thing. Thank you.
Mr. Ready, I thought you had more. I couldn't get the uh spacebar hit fast enough, sorry, Councilmember Salazar?
Uh, just really quick, and I was just looking at the participant list and I see that Mr. Wopinski isn't on the call anymore, but I I did, uh, I I wanted to um comment on a remark he made about our uh council packets not being indexed. And in fact, they are indexed, and if people download them and open them in the Adobe PDF uh reader, uh, they will have access to the index. Versus if they look at them in a web browser, then they don't see that uh that those things are indexed. So if perhaps we can get uh someone in staff to post those instructions somewhere, it might uh help with people's frustration and trying to get through those especially long packets.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Hamilton?
I was gonna make the same sug- same suggestion about the indexing, because I'm like, wait, wait, mine's indexed, so, um, but uh, um, thank you, uh, Michael for making that suggestion.
And uh, thank you, everybody, for for the meeting and um uh again, for the proclamations and the and the work that our public safety folks do and and the others, I appreciate it. And thank you to staff uh for your time and your presentations this evening. And so with that, I'm gonna go ahead and we'll adjourn our meeting to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on May twenty fifth, eight one, at seven PM. And uh, thank you to all, and please be safe and have a good evening.